Good morning. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Welsh requested to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Stanky?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Item four is business, four A, citizens input. Time citizens input is a maximum of 60 minutes. Set for input on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Anyone who wishes to participate in citizens input will utilize the podium to my left, your right. Please remember to state your name. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens input? Come on up, sir.
Good morning, Mayor Gunter and members of the council. My name is Bill Barrett, and I am here to urge you, when the time comes, to vote against the rezoning of the city-owned property at Redfish Point, which would allow the development of 110 acres of prime wetlands and mangroves to high-density occupancy. Very briefly, I'd like to draw your attention to an article in the news press this past Sunday, page three, titled Coastal Communities Are in the Path of Danger. In this article, Mr. Jim Beaver, who previously worked at the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, warned about the risks of building in wetlands and low-lying lands. Among those areas he cited were areas in Cape Coral. He stated, quote, "All these counties had tropical storm surge maps that would show areas that would be heavily impacted areas due to storm surge," unquote. We believe Redfish Point being in a known flood zone is certainly a prime example, as proven by Hurricane Ian. Also in the article, Mr. Mike Severessi, a professor, research at climate change preparations expert at FGCU, said, "One thing we learned is that green structure is important." He noted that Collier County's damage from Hurricane Ian was $68 million, and that without mangrove coverage along the shoreline, the damage would have gone up to $81 million and perhaps even more. I would note that in Lee County, over 5,000 homes were completely destroyed, and 42,500 were damaged seriously. The Redfish Point Development Plan proposes removing 10 acres of mangroves, critical mangroves that are protecting the properties and the lives of 3,500 residences in that area. I strongly urge you to follow the established science and not approve the rezoning of the area-owned bordering the Zimmel property to allow a development which would facilitate a serious increase in storm surge danger to the surrounding areas. Our 3,500 neighbors in that area are waiting, and they're watching these decisions. I would note that our petition opposing this development now has 2,946 signatures, and it is growing daily. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens input? Okay, seeing none. Before we get into four B discussions, I just want to let everybody know, at the request of city management, item B two on the agenda will be withdrawn and be brought back at a later time, is that my understanding?
That's correct. There will be a modification that will be done to address everything that we discussed.
Okay. All right. So we'll remove B two from the agenda. B one, community development block grant, disaster recovery. I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager first.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council. We're going to have Chief Lamb and staff present this item.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director here for the city. So, wanted to provide a quick update and get feedback from council on a consensus on any potential comments back on this Lee County plan. So, the county submitted out a 256-page action plan for the CBGDR funding. So just a quick refresh on what that is. This was the $1.1 billion from HUD that was provided to Lee County. Part of Lee County's action plan, as they work through this process, is they have to get a 30-day public comment period, which we are in. We've done a community input session here in council chambers back on August 3rd. We've also put it out through several social media channels to solicit direct feedback from our residents to Lee County. The current public comment period closes on August 31st. So we're looking to provide comment back to the county directly from the city on an official capacity of what our comments are. So over the last couple of weeks, we've had staff reading through this 250-plus-page document, identifying any of our potential comments, and so again, looking for comments back from council to include on an official capacity what we would send back to the county in a letter with the mayor's support. So again, the $1.1 billion, this is how it breaks down. That 70% of that has to be spent on low-modered income areas. In addition to that, this is the five buckets, so to speak, of funding that breaks down. So $660 million for housing, public infrastructure, and public facilities, public services, planning, and administration. Something like administration is set in the federal register at 5% of the total amount. Some of these other ones, like planning, is also set that way. Some of these other ones are a more of a breakdown based on need. So we went through, and this are some of the things that we support in the plan. We believe that the alignment of funding fits the priorities of the community, putting more money towards housing and critical infrastructure, and less towards economic revitalization is important because providing some of those infrastructure things and housing, especially workforce housing, is going to help those areas in the long term as well. And the plan talks about HMGP match, so Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding. That's a 75% federal contribution with a 25% local match. Within this plan, that 25% local match, if it's a qualifying project, will get that money for that 25%. So 75% from the Fed, from FEMA, the other 25% would come from this HUD dollars. So that's, we think that's a good idea for, if an HMGP project qualifies under the low-modered income or any of the other things under CBGDR. We agree with what the action plan talks about, the city's consultation, that summary on page 160, where it talks about all the things that we've met with and talked about with the county and the city's interests there. And we've met several times with county staff and talked through their action plan and the development process. So we thought that that was very positive as we've worked through several inquiries with them through that process. So those were the positives that we saw. So recommended changes are outstanding questions that we still have. So under infrastructure, specifically, there's a $5 million minimum and a $50 million maximum. So that's one that we would potentially like to see a little bit less on that minimum project in the initial part there. There's some projects that might be less than $5 million that we'd like to see included in an infrastructure project. For the HMGP funding, right now, again, tier one is included. There are conversation of tier two funding, but only for critical infrastructure if requested. So we'd like to see that expanded a little bit to be kind of automatically included like the tier one funding. Additionally, there's no conversation on tier three funding as you continue to work down in HMGP. We'd also like that to be a conversation for consideration. Additionally, the administration, again, that 5% of the overall, if we're going to take on any of these projects to administer those projects, is there any interest from the county to share some of those administration dollars for the city's cost of administering any of these projects? One of the other things, as we work through this process, once the action plan is complete and applications are submitted, there is a five calendar day period to cure any deficiencies in any of those applications. Five calendar days is pretty quick, especially if you were to get a response back on a Friday, then you're burning up, you know, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday with limited days to respond. So certainly, we want to be prompt, but five days seemed like it was pretty quick. And then, to me, the biggest part of this is going to be the ranking of the projects. So I'm going to go over here in just a second about how the process, as we see it, will continue. But what this looks like is, who's going to make up the rankings of these projects? What's that criteria going to look like as we rank infrastructure or housing projects? Who's going to be the groups that are going to make those evaluations, or what they call an evaluation committee? So we want to make sure that we're represented and that the city's interests are represented through that evaluation process. So again, next steps for this would be submission of public comment, which is due by the end of the month. Lee County has to respond, and then may or may not revise their plan based on any of those comments. HUD has 60 days to approve or provide feedback from there. The notice of funding availability comes out. Applications will be developed and submitted. Then, applications will be awarded for specific projects. Then the work will get completed, and then it's a closeout, and all of these projects have to be complete within six years per the federal register. So that's a quick overview, and if council has any comments that, in addition to the ones that you've seen here that you'd like us to include, please let us know.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I'll open it up now for any discussions. Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, I think the key thing was, when you hit it on the previous slide, that, you know, we've identified our priorities and making sure the county understands what those are, because within those 250-some pages, they're not breaking it down by community. They're breaking it down by category, and affordable housing, obviously, leading the way there. So I think, because we, you know, we identified $4 billion worth of ass, but we also prioritize what we consider to be the most important project. So making sure that they know that. There's still a lot of questions on that. Who's going to make the key decisions? You know, making sure we're a player in all of these decisions, I think is important. Among the, what also impressed me among those 256 pages was, that's also a document that doesn't only need to be used during recovery from the hurricane, but can also be used to help plan growth, not only for the county but for our city. There's a lot of great, a lot of great information in there. But I'm still a little concerned about making sure that our seat at the table is as important as anybody else's, and that our priorities, our priorities are met. And I know that our team will stay on top of that as we meet with the county. Timetable after the comment period ends next week, is there a, will the county get together and discuss, and do we know yet who's going to be part of that, part of that group, and what our positioning will be?
Timeline that they have to respond to public comments, the 30 days?
Yes.
So after the public day, or public comment period closes, they have 30 days to get response and then get it submitted into HUD, and then HUD has 60 days after that. In our conversations, again, we've appreciated the county and their conversations with us. As far as that evaluation committee, that's one that, in talking with some of their staff, that they're still looking to get with the county commissioners to present a number of options and get direction from the county commissioners on how to proceed.
Do we know when that meeting might take place with the county commissioners?
I do not. I know that's one that they're, the county is now getting much more involved in the Resilient Lee Task Force and a number of other branches to become, again, deeper involved into that process. So I imagine that'll be something that'll be quickly evolving here in the near future.
I know there's an important meeting today, so maybe some of that'll be answered.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, but thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to recognize the massive amount of work that went into this, and, you know, the number of people that participated. So hats off for addressing all of the issues that are contained in our recommendations and our report. Well-thought-out. I agree with Councilmember Hayden that assuring that our seat at the table, where all of this work, will hopefully have an effect. And if there is a date where, and kind of a question would be, is this just submitted, or is it presented?
So, all public comment goes into the report, and the county has to respond to it, and it gets included as part of the report, correct? So they have to do that. So what we're looking to do, and to try to get in addition to anything else you saw here today, was provide an official comment on that plan on behalf of the city of Cape Coral. So any resident can go in there and make a comment, but we thought there'd be collective power by saying, this is the official city of Cape Coral response or comment to that plan.
Okay. I would definitely take a few of the key points that we could do that with. Certainly having smaller projects, they're no less important than the larger projects. To have a $5 million cap on important projects, it'd be less than that. I think that's, you know, really important that that be stressed and pulled out of the report, so it doesn't get lost. And if, and if there is going to be some type of presentation, for us to have some notice on when a date, when that might be, so that we might show up, give the opportunity to be there and show our concern and vote with our feet while we're there. And the last is, are these projects expected to be done on a reimbursement program, or are they, or is this funding that is then granted and done upon receipt, so to speak?
So, sorry I missed the first part of that question, which was, right now, our plan is to submit it via a letter over to the county, and so not a formal presentation. Again, we've met with them several times to talk through any of our concerns, but we're going to submit this over as a letter and talk with county staff as well. I don't think there's an official adoption meeting by the county that would happen. Correct? No. And then, as far as the funds, it is a reimbursement process, correct? And that is through the county, and so there's a conversation of subrecipient, some of those other pieces of, is the county going to be on the hook for those dollars, or is it something that we're going to do upfront, and then seek reimbursement back to the county? But it is a reimbursement process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, I just wanted to say thanks for everyone, all their hard work. As you can see, when you look at the material that was presented to us, you know, we've been working on this since day one, when we found out about this task force. And, you know, we got a team together, and we surely have shined throughout this process. I can't tell you how many times I have other municipalities call me and ask me questions, mainly because we are prepared, we do our homework, and when we have a seat at the table, we're prepared. So thank you, Chief, and all the rest of the team for all your hard work, because it definitely shows. I will tell you, you know, as we all know, federal dollars, there's many strings attached. There is a criteria that we must follow through this, through this process. And as far as the dollars, when they become available, I think at first, they're going to put them in silos. You know, it may be a housing silo, and then you'll apply for those monies that they may say, okay, out of the 1.1 billion, there's the first batch, maybe $100 million that'll be available. So having your projects ready, you know, with a defined scope is going to be important. So I think we're doing that as we're moving forward, to make sure that when these developers come forward, that, you know, they'll be prepared and know exactly what they need to be asking for. So, you know, we still have our meetings monthly. We're just now starting to really get into the, to the meat of the subject, I believe. And, you know, I think one of the big questions that we keep asking, that we really haven't gotten the answer to, yes, you know, is the advisory committee, and who that is and how that's going to work. So we're still, where the county is still trying to define that. So we're trying to have dialogue in that, because we understand that's going to be a very important component here. And I will tell you, I brought up in our last meeting, for me personally, it kind of seemed that they were kind of trying to steer the ship in a certain direction. And then, you know, I kind of spoke up and said, you know, I think, I want to make sure that the 13 members of the task force have a voice and a vote. I wasn't necessarily there just to be driven. I wanted to be in the driver's seat. So I think we got that message across, and, you know, hopefully, we'll continue on and make sure that we are very engaged with the process, and that we make sure that we get the dollars that we should here in the city. So, a lot of hard work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Item two was removed from the agenda, so we'll go straight to B three, solid waste presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by Terry Schweitzer and a consultant that we hired.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Mayor and Council. This solid waste presentation today is a result of an engagement with Raftellus Consulting in 2022 to analyze what the needs and costs would be at a high level if the city decided to take over collection at the end of the current contract. So without any further ado, I'll present Sarah Neely, Consultant with Raftellus, who will take us through the presentation.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, everyone. Like Terry said, my name is Sarah Neely. I'm a consultant at Raftellus, and we were previously engaged in 2022 to go through an in-housing cost estimate for both the residential and commercial solid waste, solid waste lines. Little bit of an agenda of what I'll run you through today is, I'll run you through a background of the actual study. We'll walk you through what our key assumptions were in building this forecast, as well as what our key findings and conclusions were, and some key considerations for the future for the city. Little bit of background for this collection service evaluation. Like Terry and I had mentioned previously, we were tasked in 2022 to evaluate the potential cost of service to provide collection service in-house for residential and commercial customers. That included a routing requirement study, which, where we engaged our subconsultant to look at what is required for our solid waste routes. And that, and what that comprises of is looking at the different service addresses for both residential and commercial accounts, looking at the geolocations, and creating, and looking at what is required of a route, how many vehicles would be required, what the personnel would be required, how many hours a day would the route, would the routes need to be run, and how many days a week would those routes needed to be run to meet the desired level of service. We then took that and created, developed a 10-year financial forecast based on the cost and assumptions in the routing requirement study, to look at the operations as a whole, beyond the routes, what other costs would need to be considered, what type of overhead would need to be considered. Then, to 2023, we requested to update this analysis based on revised assumptions and updated costs. We revised our level of service to make sure that we did not account for any overtime. We updated inflation. We've all felt those inflationary pressures, to make sure that our costs were up to date and current. And we also extended the model to 20 years to look past, beyond the 10-year forecast, beyond that one-year lifecycle, or that one lifecycle cost, what would that look like for the future. And I talked a little bit about that 10-year financial model that was extended, and something we look at is, is what the revenue sufficiency is. And when we look at the revenue sufficiency and what our methodology is for that, I'd like to direct your attention to the chart on the right. And it goes a little, it's a little bit of a sliding scale, and it breaks down our gross revenues to our revenue requirements. And what we're looking at is, what gross revenues would the city need to generate through the monthly fee to recover costs on the revenue requirements, your operating expenses, your capital, your capital investments, your transfers to reserves, or transfers to working capital? What type of fiscal policies does the city have in place to make sure that the monthly fee, as well as your other revenues and fund balances, recover those costs? And so I'll reference this, this chart on the right throughout the presentation, but just want to give you a visual of what we're looking at in that financial forecast. Continuing on with the background, just to talk a little bit about the key costs that were examined, we looked at the, what facilities would the city need to either acquire, acquire or build to, to service these operations for residential and commercial customers? What labor, what labor costs would we look at, both indirect and direct costs? Indirect being your overhead, your supervisors, your managers; direct costs being your drivers and loaders that are actually operating the garbage trucks. We looked at equipment and vehicles, equipment, the containers that is needed, the vehicles, your automatic side loaders for trash collection, your front-end loaders for commercial collection. And we also looked at your operating supplies, your fuel and consumables, what is needed, what would be needed to run this operation. We looked at maintenance, and that's directly tied to your equipment and vehicles. We looked, and we also wrapped it up with a contingency. How do we account for our unknowns and for what could happen over this 10-year forecast as you look to in-house? Transitioning from our background into our key assumptions, and that build into those key costs, the first thing we looked at was the statistical data. The city has experienced a significant growth in recent years, and this evaluation assumed a continuation in these growth trends. The two tables break down what our customer growth rates were assumed for both residential and commercial accounts. We looked at about a 2.4% growth rate for our residential customers, and about a 2% growth rate year-over-year for our commercial customers. The key takeaway here is that the city has seen a lot of growth recently, and this has been captured into the study. And we worked with city staff to make sure that, that the growth rates that were being projected by the U.S. Census by, with the VIBR indices, that this was the reality within the city, within Cape Coral. The next key assumption is the level of service comparison. And on the screen is a chart that breaks down the monthly residential fee in a comparison for what the residential contractor would be charging with their collection days, as with their level of service, with their routes, as well as what it would look like to in-house for fiscal year 2024. And I want to take a pause here to kind of highlight that this is not quite an apples-to-apples comparison, in the sense that, that our, and we'll get into this a little bit more with our, with our resident, with our residential monthly fee, but what we had proposed and what we had estimated was a $30 fee that was held flat for eight years to recover the lifecycle cost. So that would not be something that would come back and, and come back once a year, as with a contractor may, and ask for a rate increase, per se. But it's, but we'll get into that a little bit later and into, and later into the presentation. But I would like to highlight the level of service comparison, looking at our collection days. We mirrored a five-day operation for this evaluation as part of the study, and originally, we also looked at And originally, we also looked at what a four-day evaluation would look like as well as a six-day. Um, but for purposes, um, for purposes here, we looked, this was a five, a five collection day operation. Uh, for the city side, we looked at eight hours per day uh per per employee. And so that's a little bit different than the ten hours per day that we were seeing on the contractor's side. And additionally, we looked at a higher level of service based on those route hours as well as the desired level of service for the city um to have that weekly collection, for example, for MSW, where we're seeing like twenty-five percent increase in routes for the uh from twenty, from excuse me, sixteen routes with the contractor to twenty twenty-two, uh, excuse me, to twenty-two for the MSW, um, useful solid base trash collections. Uh, so really here is just kind of a high-level look at what's what the level of service options uh would be between the contractor versus the city. The next key assumptions were the facilities. And the facilities when we were looking at, we're looking at what would the city need to acquire land-wise, building-wise, to be able to operate an in-house residential and commercial service operation? And so we assumed capital allowances that um to acquire and construct the necessary facilities for operations. We have two facility facilities that were assumed. We assumed a vehicle operations and maintenance facility um at about ten million dollars in our residential forecast. And we also, and that was to um for all the all of our vehicles that would be coming in, uh, where they would be housed, how they would be, um, how would they require regular service? And then for the storage maintenance facility on the commercial side, that was estimated about two-point-eight million dollars and that is for the containers. And a little bit of a background for the commercial containers, they're typically much larger than the residential. They're metal, they require um a bit more maintenance than your average ninety-six-gallon container that you take out to the curb uh once a week. Um, these facility costs were assumed to be debt-financed. Uh, we assumed they would be debt-financed over thirty years and at an interest rate of four-and-a-half percent. Our um our next key assumption was labor and this is the largest component um of our cost makeup. Um, I do, I know that this slide is very uh is a bit tough on the eyes and has a lot going on. So I understand that. So labor costs, to break it down, is uh as simple as possible. Our labor costs, we were provided by ci- city staff as of fiscal year twenty-three. All of the labor costs include benefits. Um, they're fully burdened costs. There is no overtime assumed. We broke out the labor cost in two categories. It was indirect and direct. Indirect was your your directors, your managers, um, your your ser- your supervisors, customer service representatives, and your direct staff was your drivers and your loaders and who was actually operating, uh, operating the trucks as they run these routes. And so for the indirect staff, there was direct, um, there were sta- there was staff assumed to be directly focused on residential as well as as the commercial operations. So there's a director and a manager operating over the whole as well as four supervisors on the residential side, breaking out to six mechanics and six customer service representatives solely focused on the residential operations. On for the commercial side, there was one supervisor that would be dedicated to the commercial operations. There was a fleet mechanic that um that was dedicated to the commercial vehicles, three customer service representatives, a fabricator and a welder um for those, for the containers and for that equipment maintenance. The direct staff assumed there was ninety-seven, ninety-nine um staff assumed for the residential operation, which was broken out with seventy drivers and twenty-nine loaders. And for commercial, we assumed fourteen drivers and four loaders. And so something that's important to point out here is that for the residential service, we and looking at the drivers and loaders, we have assumed different uh different allocations based on the vehicle type. And we will look and we'll on the believe on the next slide, we'll dive into those vehicle types. But for example, for an automa- automatic side loader that's picking up your weekly trash, we only assumed one driver. Uh, we would assume, we assumed one driver versus when we're looking at our bulky collection, we assumed a driver and a loader on those trucks. And so that also can help explain, uh, you may be wondering if it's a one-to-one um for drivers and loaders and that's dependent on the truck. And so the labor cost, um, as I mentioned previously, this counts for about fifty-six percent of that thirty-dollar, um, that thirty-dollar estimated uh fee and it is our largest cost. Our next key assumption was vehicles and fuel. Uh, these vehicles were based off of uh recent cost estimates that were then further uh further validated through benchmarking of recent quotes that we've seen with other municipalities in the area of what they have seen when they have gone out to bid for new trucks. Uh, we also further then validated uh those numbers by looking into um the different, what contracts could the city kind of back off of um or piggyback off of um with other with other organizations such as like the Florida Sheriff's Department and what their view, what type of um contract mechanisms they use to acquire their vehicles? Uh, so we feel good about these about these cost estimates per vehicle. Uh, we looked at the automatic side loaders. We looked at uh claw or boom trucks, rear-end loaders. Uh, we looked at different like your light vehicles. We looked at front-end loaders. Uh, the chart on the right just breaks down what the what type of residential vehicles we looked like by what's what type of service line that they would be, uh, they would be following the cost as well as how many vehicles would be estimated to be needed for service assuming in twenty twenty-four. It's important to note that we assumed an eight-year service life and we also assumed a truck reserve allowance of forty percent. And these are your spare vehicle, um, spare vehicle costs in case of any type of any type of failure, any type of unknown or contingency that would be needed. We also assumed debt financing for all of these vehicles to be purchased. The term was based off of five years and there was an interest rate assumption of three-and-a-half percent. So in addition with the vehicles, we also worked on um creating assumptions around the fuel economy and how to estimate the costs for fuel that the city would need to account for. And the costs were estimated based on the total mileage. And we looked back at the total mileage for for the vehicles based off of our routing requirements, uh, based on our routing requirements uh evaluation that we worked with in the beginning and the very beginning of our study. We had assumed a price per gallon for diesel fuel at four dollars and sixty-four cents and this was escalated escalated annually four percent per year. Our next key assumption, um, after vehicles was our containers. The city currently owns owns the container in service and we assumed a full replacement of all the containers in service uh for conservative planning. But it is important to note that it's likely that not all carts and containers would require replacement. So this is um, this is a very conservative estimate on what we would uh for what the cost would be to replace and what the cost would be for containers. For the residential containers, um, were assumed at ninety-six or sixty-four gallons. We assumed two containers per household. And it was uh further assumed that ninety-five percent of the containers currently in service and that would be purchased would be from ninety-six-gallon containers and five percent would be sixty-four-gallon containers. The service life we assumed was uh was ten years for your MSW or trash containers. And we assumed fifteen years for recycling. And there's a, we assumed the difference because um based off of the level of collection with recycling uh being less than MSW and getting a little bit less wear and tear at the curb. Um, but we have seen, um, this was our assumption in the model, but we have seen some of these containers last much longer. Again, this is a fairly conservative estimate. Um, as far as our commercial containers, um, the city has a wide range of offerings for commercial that um ranging from two cubic yards to forty cubic yards. There's also that can sixty-four-gallon, ninety-six-gallon carts that are offered. There are compacters um that are offered. And we assumed an across-the-board um estimate of a fifteen-year service life for those containers. And again, we assumed a full replacement of these containers um across the city's system, but it is likely that not all, um, not all carts would require replacement. Our next assumption, um, after vehicles and containers is the maintenance. Uh, we did a deep dive into what what we could expect for maintenance costs and we looked at the vehicle maintenance and insurance expenses were determined on a cost curve linked to the vehicle age. And that cost curve is the chart in the bottom right-hand corner. And these costs have been something that we have been estimating um for a multitude of studies across the state as well as across the country that we were able to validate based on these prior um prior engagements. And so we believe it provides a reasonable estimate for planned and unplanned maintenance. But to give you an example, looking at the audit, like looking at an automatic side loader, one of your garbage uh truck vehicles, if you pay three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for it, in your first year, you add, in your first year, you for um insurance and maintenance as an expense of the cost, you'd assume you assuming about eleven thousand two-hundred-and-about-seventy dollars or so, give or take. That was some mental math there, um, so give or take about eleven thousand two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. But whereas if you look farther into like year eight, um, you would be assuming about twenty-six thousand dollars per year in maintenance for that vehicle, about twenty-six thousand five-hundred uh dollars per that vehicle. And that would be to replace uh like your hydro, like hydraulics. That would be much larger, um, planned maintenance would need to be taken into account versus that first year, that could be like your tire rotations, that could be, um, that could be new tires, that could be very small planned maintenance or unplanned maintenance. Um, so we assumed that there would be periodic maintenance for each of the vehicles. Uh, the top chart above our maintenance expense curve um gives you a little bit of a window of what our residential um maintenance expense costs were assumed throughout uh the forecast. We assumed about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, ranging all the way to about one uh one-point-six million, again, based on as the vehicles in the system age and and age through uh through service. So, um, our next key assumption was our fiscal targets and contingencies. What are we aiming for with our rates? What is the city's goal um to be fiscal with their fiscal sustainability? And what what type of contingencies are we layering in to account for any unknowns? Um, so to do this, for residential and commercial, we did assume the same level for their personnel, indirect overhead, vehicle and contingency for unknown allowances. Um, I would like to apologize, there is a typo on the screen. Our personnel reserve allowance is at forty percent of personnel expenses. Our indirect overhead allowance is at five percent of our operating expenses. The vehicle reserve allowance is is at forty percent of the vehicle expenses and the contingency for unknowns is three percent of our total costs. We we have account, we accounted for that um through our discussions with city staff to allow, to look at, okay, what what could those tough worst-case scenarios be? What if costs continue continuously increase? Where where would we be? We wanted to make sure that we were accounting for uh for the different possibilities to create a, to create an attainable forecast for the city's in-house collection. And we did this also with the idea to maintain our fiscal targets. We assumed a minimum cash reserve target of ninety days. And, um, this is fairly uh routine across the industry. We see, um, ninety days is pretty much a baseline there. And with that thirty-dollar fee that we were estimating, that thirty-dollar residential fee would get the city to a ninety-day, uh, would get their themselves to a ninety-days cash reserve target in three years. And that was also part of the goal of of developing a thirty-dollar fee, um, flat fee for the eight years to meet these reserve targets. We also assumed a minimum debt coverage target of one-point-two-five and this is something with the estimated fee that the the city meets in all of the forecast years. So getting a little bit into our fi- our findings and conclusions, uh, looking at our residential forecast, if we were to assume that thirty-dollar flat rate fee from twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-one, uh, the first table breaks down what the annual revenue could be assumed with respect to growth. And you can see it ranges from thirty-three million to about thirty-seven-point-nine million in twenty thirty-one. Uh, with respect to the cost of service, you can see that we are, uh, we are working to add to our reserves and then it looks, then in twenty twenty-nine, it, there is a jump in our cash reserves and our deposits. And that's based off of those five-year vehicle leases and that and those um financing for the vehicles that we had assumed. And then in twenty twenty-nine, it could, it could be, uh, it could be a potential option to the city to uh to look at for the next life cycle cost, could they buy down debt? Could they buy, could, what are other options that they could do for that second, for that second life cycle of the vehicles? Um, the below, the below ta- um, chart represents the cash position and that reaches that the ninety days of cash and the first three years of operations based off of the thirty dollars estimated fee, um, and it meets those cash targets. The next slide shows what the what the commercial forecast would look like. And it assumes, our forecast assumed that the city would charge the same fee as what the contractor is currently charging for commercial customers, but that fee has been escalated at three percent per year. And it can be seen that there is, um, you can see that we are net, that we have some net to reserves that are growing through the forecast as well as we have a very, uh, we have a, we have our cash that is growing pretty consistently uh through twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-one. And it's possible that these surpluses could be used to lower rates as well as um different financing opportunities. So continuing with our findings and considerations, uh, we have a chart on the right-hand side that breaks down a residential rate comparison of how the city of Cape Coral would stack up with its comparable entities. Um, in-housing is estimated to result in a greater cost, but it's important to note that a great, greater level of service is assumed. And there's also significant startup capital with our facilities, with our vehicles, with the containers, but that the city would have more control over their service. And that these, and that while our rates are above the average, several of these entities that are listed here are will be, are currently and will be facing pressure in the next few years to raise rates due to expiring collection contracts in the next several years. I'd also like to note on the chart that we would need to account for disposal um and for the disposal with the county, with Lee County. And that would be about roughly almost a little bit under three dollars, um, that would need to be added to the rate. Um, we do have one additional slide uh to this presentation under our findings and considerations to do a little bit of a deeper look at what these, what these market rates and what these market values are doing. Um, I'm gonna share it through the projector, um, if that's all right.
I'm not sure how we switch over to Almo.
Thank you so much.
Now I know.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So hopefully there's not too many shadows or anything. Um, but for the findings, uh, our findings and considerations, like our final slide for looking at the market value is that we had done, um, we had done an analysis on what what the cost indices and the cost of collection has looked like since two thousand eleven based off the garbage and trash index as well as the weighted indices that make up these collection contracts. That's your, that's your labor cost, that's your fuel cost, um, with your CNG and your diesel. And what we- diesel, and what we can see is that the cost, well, the cost of service has outpaced inflation. You can see that the, that the diesel and the CNG have skyrocketed, especially in the last, huh, two to three years, and that the garbage and trash index, which the garbage and trash index is, uh, done by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it takes a range of what garbage, what garbage and trash bills range from across the country. And this typically lags behind about a year, a year or two, and we have seen that, and those bills are then based off of your collection contracts, which are driven by your C and, those CNG, the diesel, the labor cost. And so what we have seen is that it, that the garbage and trash will continue to increase as the CNG, as your, as your fuel and your labor costs continuously increase while CPI continues to lag behind. This was analysis that we had done back in tw- twenty twenty-two, uh, for the Solid Waste Association of North America, and we, we updated these numbers just to show that the garbage and trash index is continuing to rise. And through this, it's important, uh, to notice that, with some examples that we're seeing with other, we're, we're being, we're starting to see this affect municipalities across the country, as, as well as, as well as in Florida especially, we're seeing with our clients, that they're seeing that these market bids, uh, for service are ranging between twenty and twenty-five dollars per residential unit, and that's based off of the, the cost of service that it's costing these contractors. Um, and two specific examples are Hillsborough County, um, recently went out to bid for their, for their contract. They were previously, a few years ago, they're about eight to nine dollars per, um, per residential unit, and their bids came back about twenty, twenty-one dollars. So you're seeing dramatic increases, even, um, and if we want to even bring it closer to home, in Lee County, um, just as, just as recent as last week, they adopted and received two new bids, um, for two service areas for their contracted collection, and they were seeing bids between, uh, twenty and twenty-one dollars as well. And so this is something that is continuously, uh, we're continuously seeing and we have seen across the country. So, um, to re, to conclude before we open up to questions, this, this evaluation of thirty dollars, that's a preliminary estimate that's subject to change based on, uh, based on the decided level of service, and that there's contingencies baked in there. It's important to note that we have some fairly conservative contingencies in there for our personnel and labor, for our vehicles, our containers, the facilities, and that, that it's not necessarily a recommendation or intended to be, um, to provide, um, rate, rate adjustment advice and recommendations there, but rather to show a window of if you were to hold your fee flat for the next eight years, what it could look like in a, in a worst-case scenario, um, per se, with those high levels of contingencies. Um, so with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I guess before I open it up, Mr. City Manager, I know you were providing some, um, information for us here today to take a look at prior to this meeting. Does, does staff have a recommendation? I, I, I did not see any type of recommendation that staff has, or are you just trying to, trying to see, uh, you know, check the temperature or counsel?
It, it's the latter, Mayor. So what, what we've done here, looking out three years, um, when the contract with Waste Pro is set to expire, um, we were just trying to get some information provided to council to see, um, if, if there is any level of interest to try and head in the direction of insourcing, um, that workload, uh, we need to kind of understand where that would be now in order to, you know, staff up, you know, start designing and building a, a facility, start, you know, getting the material. Um, so we wanted to take a look, before we even go down that road, what are the rates estimated to be, and then see if, if it's, if it's even something that, you know, council would be interested in, knowing that we would be anticipating at this point, uh, being about twenty percent higher than the, than the market is, you know, today. So there's some, is there some elasticity in the rates such that our, our residents and businesses would want to pay a little more to have a little bit better service? Likely, maybe? Um, is it at twenty percent over the market? That, that's the unknown. So we just wanted to kind of have the discussion. Obviously, if there is, uh, a, a collective to go that way, we have, we have a lot more work to do, but this is just a basic discussion to, uh, to understand what the thoughts are of the council.
And one of the things that I mentioned yesterday in our meeting, you know, as we all know, and, you know, we've had several meetings here recently, in, in the last year, where we know our Waste Pro contract is probably going to be up in three years, and, uh, you know, we're kind of, uh, reaping the benefits at the, at what we are paying now, but we do know that the market, uh, today is probably going to be close the amount that we're, double the amount that we're paying. One of the concerns that I had with the presentation that I brought to your attention yesterday is I would really like to see that analysis compared to where we are today, because we know we are way behind on what we should be paying. So if you're asking me to make a decision on one or the other, that would be the type of analysis that I would like to see, what the market is now. We already know we're thirteen dollars and something. We know if you double that, it's twenty-six, so then the variable could be between twenty-six and thirty, and not thirteen and thirty.
That's the, that's the whole reason for this chart that they put up.
Okay.
The additional chart was to say that, yes, we have a, a contract, uh, the slide six represented the contract versus the thirty, uh, the intent of bullet number two, and kind of this was to, uh, bring it more forward and say, okay, regardless of where you're at with the contract, the market is at twenty to twenty-five today, and that market is going to continue to grow towards the thirty, uh, in three years. So that, that was the intent of, of, of adding this, was to try to bring it more forward as opposed to comparing to our existing rate.
So I guess the question would be, where do you anticipate in three years? And maybe this is a question for the consultant. Where do you think, based on the information that you have today, what the market rates are today, what the increases have been the last few years? Um, where do you think would be a good number in three years?
I would say that based off of the, what the inflation indices and what we're seeing now with this such a sharp increase, that this is, will only continue to grow, um, over the next few years as they, as contractors are working to catch up on the, the rates and the costs that they have really struggled with to provide their cost of service. And I would say that if we looked at like a one-point-three factor and we, if we escalated three percent off of some of the, of the contract rates, what we're seeing coming in at between twenty and twenty-five dollars, that it would be well within the range of, of the thirty-dollar fee that, um, that the city could estimate looking at, and I think...
I'm comfortable with that.
Yes.
I, I put together a, a brief that kind of, uh, go along with this, Mayor, this, this chart, it's, I apologize for it's small, I put it together about fifteen minutes before we came over, but basically, right now, uh, the proposal on the CPI from Waste Pro, we're looking at thirteen point two-nine for the rate, current market rate's roughly twenty-five, twenty-six a, a month. Uh, in-house rate would be thirty, so the variance to market rate for in-house, there's our numbers. So as we projected out, I projected out the, um, market rate at the six-point-one-three percent increase using the garbage and trash index, which, uh, by twenty twenty-seven, it's going to be about thirty-two bucks. If we could, uh, if everything goes according to, uh, you know, CPI and everything, Waste Pro might make it to sixteen, that's where I use the, I use the same six percent, um, for them. So they'd be at sixteen, uh, in-house at thirty, so at that point, we'd be pretty close to what the market rate would be.
Right.
So I think, uh, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does. I mean, you know, because what I'm trying to look at, not necessarily where we are with Waste Pro, I think all of us could probably sit here and say, we're probably pretty fortunate to be in the position that we're in, but we know the big elephant in the room is going to hit us in three years. To me, I'm looking at, okay, where are we going to be in three years? You know, because this is a thirty-year decision that you're asking us to make. So what I'm trying to do is, okay, we're fortunate now, where are we going to be in three years compared to what it's going to cost us? The numbers that I see, when you look at it that way, is we're probably going to be the same place. We're probably going to be thirty, might even be a little worse, so you got thirty-two there. Um, for me personally, um, you know, if you look back historically of the problems that we had, um, you know, we're relying on a contractor where we have very little control, um, or if there is some control mechanisms put in place, such, such a process to get a correction completed, uh, in a timely manner. So for me, when you look at the numbers based on where we'll probably be at market value in three years compared to what it's going to cost us to have more control, I think better service, um, and I think if you look over a thirty-year period, you know, because some of the debt is listed at thirty years, um, I think that, uh, I think we'll be, we will be better off, uh, in the long run, uh, especially when you think about the type of service we'll be providing the community. We're going to be paying it either way, I, the way I look at it. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm at on that. Uh, I would, you know, when you look at all the charts that you provided today, you know, what I would like to see personally is, hey, let's put that market value number where we're going to think we're going to be in three years. Let's, let's adjust all of the charts and all the numbers and give us that good defined look. That way, instead of, hey, we're in a great spot right now, we're fortunate, but we know there's a big elephant in the room. I want to look at the big elephant now, so that, that's where I'm at on it. Uh, Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. Um, uh, ju- just a couple of quick questions, probably would take quick answers. How long in your experience were you've done these evaluations for your municipality looking to take this in-house, if you will? How long does it take them to gear up and be ready? So when would a final decision need to be made if we wanted to be ready when the Waste Pro contract ends?
Okay, so I've been doing some, uh, research on that, and there was a, um, Swana, uh, Solid Waste Association of North America had put on a presentation earlier in the year, um, about startups, so I'll, I'll kind of, we'll go from a deadline, like, if the, when the start, when collection would begin and work back. Anywhere from twelve to eighteen months just to get the equipment in. So, you know, we start looking at that, now we're into, you know, twenty twenty-six at the earliest. Then from there, we got to look at, we don't even have facility, we got to design the facility and all that, because that, from my understanding, is not in the current, um, uh, building design for the new public works facility, fleet facility. So we're looking at that, and that the cost that was in, that we baked in was what would it look like, um, when the city was fully populated, out to the, you know, four hundred thousand people? How many trucks would we need? Basically double what we have, so we looked at that facility, however long that would take to engage, uh, a design firm to build, you know, to design it and then to build it. So we're probably looking at, um, three years, so basically next year, a decision would have to be made. Um, we have to staff up and train, and I will, the one thing I want to say, one of the biggest challenges that we would have, uh, uh, you know, with a timeline, but also not only s- starting up the service but continuing service throughout is staffing. We all know, you know, and have experienced what the issues are with short staff, you know, when they're, when they're short staffed with drivers. The industry has shown, uh, in the last year or so that it's slowed somewhat, but just about every week across the country, um, there's articles in there about municipalities that are, you know, re- reducing a line of service, eliminating it because there's not enough, uh, uh, staff, drivers. There's also other places where they have a contractor that, you know, they're looking at going back out to bid. So when we look at the ninety, we'll just use the ninety-nine drivers as an example, we're going to be pulling from the same pool of drivers that everybody else is pulling from, and we all know across the country, there's still a driver shortage, and I want to say it was projecting out past twenty thirty that there's going to be, this includes over-the-road drivers and everything else, about a hundred and eighty thousand drivers short across the country. That is the one thing I want to make sure, whatever way we go, um, which, you know, hey, if the city wants to do it, that's great, but we're going to always have to be cognizant of the driver situation. The good thing is we have a, a bigger pool of people to pull from, um, and we're not affecting another contract somewhere else. If, if a contractor has to pull a driver from somewhere else, and coming from that side of the fence before I, I took this role, that was one of the biggest challenges, and you'd pull somebody from somewhere else for a week or two to come in and help, and then they'd have to go back, and you're constantly fighting that, that driver issue. I just, I...
Well, thank you for dovetailing, uh, into another question I had. The, uh, between, uh, direct and indirect and, uh, residential and commercial, it looks like, uh, you're, uh, estimating that we require about a hundred and forty-two hires. That a hundred and forty-two people, does that include when people call in sick, have vacation, or is that on the job, we need that many people?
That, that includes the, um, uh, personal time off and people that aren't here, so that covers for the, covers for those folks as well.
Okay, because that, that concerned me before you ever brought it up, that, you know, right now we have a, a labor force shortage, we have an affordability of housing shortage, and if we've got to bring a hundred and forty-two people here with this type of training or experience, uh, for them to find the housing that they can afford, uh, and to gear up the labor force to make this happen, uh, would be certainly a consideration slash concern of mine. The other relates, uh, to the equipment itself. Um, it's seventy, seventy-six residential vehicles, um, there was no note of any commercial vehicles that, that I saw, so the number of, that we have, we'd need more vehicles than just the seventy-six residential?
That, yeah, you're correct, Councilmember, that, that was just for the residential piece. Um, so roughly on the commercial side, four to five front loads would be running every day in three to four roll-off trucks. So then, you know, that, the, the additional personnel are baked into the, to the study to run those, um, and then the spare factor, again, you know, we're looking at another twenty-five percent, uh, equipment on top of that.
Okay, and, and I heard, I believe, uh, that there was a forty percent reserve on equipment, that, does that number of vehicles include that reserve? Or I'm not understanding quite the forty percent reserve on equipment.
Uh, so the forty percent reserve allowance was a dollar amount, um, that was put into effect in, uh, to counteract what type of spares they would, uh, you would need. Um, we typically see in the industry, I've seen about twenty to twenty-five percent of the vehicles, um, are needed, twenty-five to, twenty to twenty-five percent of spare vehicles of the total, um, would be needed, and so we just, to be, uh, ultra-conservative, we assumed a forty percent, uh, dollar allowance, and so that's baked into the total cost, but not, um, in the vehicles themselves, the vehicle numbers themselves.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, um, is there special financing available for this, uh, type of, uh, an effort? Because I thought I heard you say we were looking at a three-and-a-half percent interest rate on the debt service, and that doesn't seem like it correlates to where we really are today.
Right, uh, so the three-and-a-half percent we assumed because it was a short-term financing lease, uh, for the vehicles, for our, for our larger facilities, we were assuming about four-and-a-half percent. Uh, we looked at a sensitivity of a range for the vehicles between three-and-a-half and four, uh, to four, four-and-a-half percent, and it was a fairly de minimis number. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but we, um, but I could share that with you, um, after this presentation.
And is that what the leasing companies are using for their calculations, or is this, what would that three-and-a-half percent be applied to?
Right, so the three-and-a-half percent was, uh, towards what, what leasing, or, excuse me, what fin, debt financing the vehicle would look like, and that was an assumption that we had, um, made with, um, in conversations with city staff, as well as looking at what other municipalities, um, that we've worked with have seen when they have gone out to debt finance their vehicles in recent years, um, assuming a five-year lease. So, and so that's something that we've seen, we did not, uh, go out and benchmark specifically... We did not go out and benchmark specifically to a leasing aid or debt financing agent.
Okay, well, I would recommend before we make a serious decision on this that we do that because what we all know about interest rates today, that could make a dramatic difference in cost at basically what's looking like double that rate. So just a thought.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, like the mayor, was looking for something like this chart that Terry provided. I think context is key moving forward. So for example, in slide six, when we compared the current contract at thirteen fifty-eight and then we jumped straight to thirty dollars, I think without that context, it seems like a criminal leap. So, so yeah, messaging moving forward, I think is important for our residents to let them know that regardless, that twenty-five number is more realistic or more regardless of which, which route we take. So thank you for that. The only other thing that I wanted to state is from a data point as well, when you look at the slides, that some of these comparables in the, in the last slide, for me, it's helpful to know that, for example, the city of Tampa at the thirty-four ninety-one, that's for twice a week pickup. And so similarly with Naples and Collier County, they're also, I believe, receiving twice a week pickup. And so that's not necessarily an apples to oranges. I know that wasn't your point and you can't contemplate for everything. But, but in the context of our decisions that we make when we're attributing the numbers on their face, I think that's important to understand that the services are, in that context, at least wildly different. And so I appreciate you being here, I appreciate all the work that you've put in. But for me personally, when you look at this thing holistically and you see that the numbers, for us to handle it in-house versus going to market at best are a wash. I, I don't know that I would support moving forward in, in any meaningful way with that in mind, knowing that if we're going to pay the same regardless, but we, if we move it in-house are encumbering ourselves with handling the logisticals and the day-to-day and the maintenance and so on, so forth. If we could pay the same and have that be someone else's problem, frankly, I would, I would support going the outsourced contract route rather than trying to keep it in-house. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. What I didn't see in there, you know, you talked about the revenues and the costs broken down by year. What are the initial startup costs? To build the building, to hire all the people, to buy all the trucks? What would it initially cost us out the gate? Do we, do we have that number?
We do have that number that's referenced in the report. Off the top of my head, I would need to check back on the report, but I can pull it up and bring it, and bring it over to you after this.
I'd be kind of curious because obviously all that has to be set probably by debt anyway, anyway to get that done. Obviously, we know costs are, are going to go up, whether it's twenty, twenty-five, whether it's thirty, it's going to be close to doubling what residents are paying now. When we were at Florida League of Cities a couple of weeks ago, I was having a conversation with somebody that leases trucks. I'm assuming this report is us buying the trucks. Is there a difference there? Would it be beneficial to look into a leasing, a leasing program rather than buying all these trucks? I know we're a huge city and most of these companies probably don't face what we face. Just curious.
Leasing and buying, if you're leasing, then you're going to be turning them over after a certain period of years. And, you know, so we would have to look at that. In this particular case, we're looking at buying. I want to answer the question about the interest rate. These are tax-exempt interest rates that we forecasted that we would be utilizing three years from now. What the actual rate will be is anybody's guess, but it's not going to be twice that amount. It's a tax-exempt interest rate and so it's always going to be less than what the market rates are out there if you're not borrowing on a tax-exempt basis. And so we worked with them on setting up that rate. But as far as leasing and purchasing is concerned, it, you know, if you're leasing and you're leasing to own, your rates are going to be very similar to what they are if we borrowed on a tax-exempt basis. If you're leasing to flip them over at a later date, then it would be a little bit different because there's a residual value associated with that at the end of the term. But we would likely stretch out the term a little bit longer than, and, but at the same time, we are always going to want to have some type of reserve in the back, in the background. If you don't have the reserve for the trucks, you know, anything that's going to break down, you're not going to be able to go out there and pick up.
No, I'd just be curious how that factors in. And Terry, the timeline you just presented, and we've, we've had this discussion about how long it takes just to get in a fire truck. Is twelve to eighteen months to get in the equipment kind of aggressive?
That, that's industry standard, twelve to eighteen months. Depending on, you know, the quantity that we need, the types, that kind of thing, but yeah.
And based on three years to possibly build a new facility, hire the people, we're, you know, we're there if we want to, we want to take a look at it. And I'm not sure that I'm even close to being there about doing it ourselves. But certainly it's a discussion we have to have moving forward and there has to be a lot more of these discussions, I think, in, in the short term, you know, as we look at this and as, and as we, as we look at market rates. One quick question, you know, I was looking at typically the revenues to the costs. We were, revenues were exceeding until the year twenty twenty-eight?
Yes.
And we lost money? That year, was there a specific reason for that?
In twenty twenty-eight, that's when our, that's when our assumed debt financing for the vehicles and our debt service would drop off. So that's when we would start building more of a cash reserve. And then that would be an opportunity for the next lifecycle if you wanted to buy down some of that debt, if you continue to assume that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Councilman Hayden pretty much asked a few of the questions I was going to ask you. But there was one more question, you may have stated this, so I apologize. But how many trucks would we need for the city of our size?
So for residential, for, for assuming that it started tomorrow, let's say, we were assuming seventy-six residential trucks. And we were, I believe we were assuming, and I'll double check this number, but I believe we were assuming about fourteen commercial trucks. And that would continue to grow over the forecast period with the growth in our routes and with the growth in the population.
And you were stating that depends on the quantity of how many trucks you would buy could take up to eighteen months. So more quantity, could it take longer or would it be a shorter time period?
That would, more trucks would take longer because the manufacturer is going to run the trucks through the line and, you know, of course they got to, I don't want to say compete, but, you know, there's competing entities out there that are going to need the trucks as well. So it'd be a huge task order for a manufacturer. And part of that, we would have to, I would assume at this point, put an RFP on the types of trucks and, you know, the, how they operate, you know, some of the ins and outs of the, of the equipment that we would want. In other words, an ASL that would have a certain capacity, certain engine size, those kinds of things.
That was my next question. So for, for the commercial trucks versus the residential trucks, is there a huge difference? Much bigger, wider?
Yeah, typically a commercial truck's going to have a larger capacity, hold more, but it's completely designed different for, as folks that, you know, they drive, when you drive around at like a seven eleven, for example, the square dumpster, that's going to have the forks that go in and, and pick the container up and cannot be used on a residential route.
Right.
So yeah, there is a difference for sure.
Okay, so knowing that we're looking at an average of ninety trucks that would be ordering, what, your guess, I know we're just discussing this, would be, you know, you were talking eighteen months, is that still eighteen months or could it be longer if you're looking at ninety trucks total?
I'm going to say my, my guess, you know, and this is again, the industry's, the standard from the presentation that was made, but in my experience, it's going to take probably at least eighteen months to, to get all the trucks in and have, you know, have them all built and have them all here ready to go. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my best guess at this time, councilmember.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I don't want to re, excuse me, I don't want to repeat what the other councilpeople say. I agree with a lot that was said already. I think the moral of the story is protecting the citizen's service and making sure that the citizens pay an affordable rate. I think when you look at it the way we looked at it today, we're weighing out the cost to operate that kind of business. I believe that it would cost us slightly more than a private company to operate. So I think the other part of the equation is protecting our citizens and make sure we have good service all the time. But our vulnerable part that we haven't talked about is if it does go out for contract, with the size of our city, how many companies really have the ability to bid our city? So if there are very minimal, a very small amount of companies that can even bid our city, then that's a vulnerability. They know they have us and they're going to charge us a lot more than whatever the going rate is when you do your studies. So maybe another part of the, the plan would be to break our city up, have multiple contracts, so our vulnerability is less when it comes to how much control these vendors have against us. You know, it's like any product out there, when somebody creates a monopoly, then they can get whatever they want. If we're dealing with a monopoly, then, then I'm, then I'm for doing it in-house because that's the only way we'll protect ourselves from that. But if we break the city up into multiple locations, multiple pickups and separate contracts, you know, did we do the research and are there a lot more companies that could now bid that work because they can handle twenty-five percent of our city or thirty percent of our city? So I think that's other, other things that we should look at. But when we just straight look at what's it cost to operate this kind of business, I, I think it would always cost government a little bit more than what it would cost on the outside. So, but when you add in the monopoly part and the other variables that I talked about, then that, that could, that could sway me. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I, I wanted to concur with councilmember Long that if it doesn't, if it doesn't save our citizens money, I think all the moving parts that we become responsible for, I don't think the juice would be worth the squeeze at that point. And just a, a comment that if we were to make a mistake on money, that is much more easily recoverable than if we make a mistake on time. And so if we would choose to do this, I would propose that we would choose to do this in time that we would almost be prepared to overlap our contract with Waste Pro because the last thing that we need is we've estimated trucks to come in at eighteen months. And it ends up that it takes them twenty-four months to come in and Waste Pro's contract is done. And now how do we get our citizens' trash off the street? So from the standpoint of being conservative, as you mentioned a number of times as it relates to, as it relates to dollars and cents, I would say that we need to be as conservative, if not more conservative, our considerations of the time that it's going to take to be prepared. And because many of us saw what, what happened in our area when COVID hit and what it, how long it took to build buildings and get materials and get vehicles. You'd go around and you'd see, you know, not a single car on a, on a, on a dealer's lot. Well, I'm sure the same thing would happen in the truck production industry. If for whatever reason something came up again and, and we've already determined that we're not going to renew our contract with Waste Pro, we would really be in a bind. So I think we need to be very conservative time-wise and make a decision early on this with the thought maybe we'd be doubled up rather than find ourselves in a position where how do we get the citizens' trash off the street?
Thank you, councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with councilmember Long. I think if the costs between the two options are a wash, then it doesn't make sense to go to so much trouble because it will be a huge amount of trouble to make this change. And I do have a question, and this might have been said in the presentation, but at what point would the city go out for the RFP for the next potential vendor?
Council, councilmember, that's a good question. The, I would say at a minimum, we got, we, we need to start looking at it twenty twenty-five, start developing an RFP to get it published because again, the, the proposers would have the same issue getting equipment in twelve to eighteen months, you know, twenty-four months. So we would need to give them plenty of time to gear up if it, if it went to another, a successful contractor. That, that I would say at a minimum, we're, we're looking at probably twenty, twenty-five to really start the process to get this going. Because we're going to definitely need to rewrite the bid specs as we all know. The ones that, current, the current RFP contract is from twenty, twenty-ten. So it's time to update a lot of the, the ins and outs of the, of the contract. Yeah, twenty twenty-five would be my, my safe assumption at this point.
So time is an issue, like councilmember Stanky said. It would be ideal to make this decision now, but I don't feel like I can make it. I feel like I need some more information that was, you know, requested today. So hopefully we can get that soon because this is a big decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, councilmember Cosden. You know, for me, I don't think we have all the information yet to make a, you know, a good defined decision. But with that being said, I think it's a decision we probably need to make by the end of the calendar year. So, you know, I think that we need to, and I also want to hear from staff, hey, what's your recommendation? Your other guys has got to run it. Like councilmember Long said, you know, if, if it's going to be an even wash, do you want to take all that on? So that's something that you're taking on, we're not taking it on. So, you know, that's important to me as well. I want to hear from staff, what's your recommendation? Give us all the numbers, give us all the data, give us your recommendation. Then I think we all can probably make the decision that you're looking for. Mr. City Manager.
If you want my recommendation, I have it. I, I didn't want to precede the discussion to see where you all were at.
But, yeah, after he, his light was next.
Yeah, I, I think we've heard from everybody, so I wanted to.
I think councilmember Shepherd had one more comment.
My, my question wasn't answered. I think another big part of how to make the decision is if the contract was up now, how many companies would have the ability to even bid our city as a whole? Or would we be forced to break the city up because of the availability of contractors that can even take on our city? I mean, is there only one or two sources that have the ability? And if we have to break the city up so there's more bidders to get us a better price? I, I think if the answer was there, there's nobody out there to hire, then we would be forced to go in a certain direction. So I think this is, this information is, is just as important.
And that, that's a good point. Off the top of my head, without naming company names, but there would probably be roughly a half a dozen that would be able to start out of the gate. We would have to put in the RFP a minimum, you know, city-sized population, customer base to even qualify to, to propose. Because there's rumor out there that some that aren't even in the business of residential, that are pretty big commercial outfits, want to bid on it. Well, you got to have the experience, you know, we're not, to your point, we're not going to have somebody come in here that's never picked up trash and they're the lowest bidder. Well, you got to have some experience, right? So there's pluses and minuses to address the breaking up the city. There are contracts across the country where they've split municipalities up into different zones, you know. One close by is Lee County. Again, there's pluses and minuses to that. One, you have smaller, you have a bigger pool of people to, contractors that can do the work. But then you also get a larger cost variation from one area to another because Company A, it might cost them X to do this area. And, you know, another company in a different area might be higher or lower. That's some of the issues that I've heard over the years and Sarah, you may be able to talk more about it. But I've heard, you know, a lot of people complain because they got to pay more for the same service that somebody else is paying just because they picked somebody else up. I'm kind of in favor if we went out the contract. I'll just give my recommendation, this is one holler. It's a lot easier to manage because you're only dealing with one entity, you're not dealing with multiple different companies. So that's just my, if, if it was to go out to bid. I will say my recommendation, if the, if the city decides to do it in-house, I relish the chance because service has always been my driving factor in the twenty-five-plus years I've been in the solid waste business. It's a service industry and the service has to be there. And whatever needs to be done to get that service. And whatever needs to be done to get that service, that's what it needs to be. We're not, we're not, a municipality is not driven by profit, right? I mean, at the end of the day, I get it, companies, and I was in the business. We want to provide the service, but we're also out there to make money. We're not out there to make money as a city. We're out there to provide the service. And to me, that's the most important foundation of the whole process. If the costs are comparable, again, that's a decision that would have to be made. That's my, that's how I feel.
And one more thing. You said a half a dozen companies have the ability. Well, we know from the research that we've heard that it would take almost two years just to get the equipment. So would it be wise for us to reach out to the half dozen companies that are out there and say, would you even have interest in the future of bidding our city? Because that half dozen might get narrowed down to a lot less. Just because they exist doesn't mean they'd be interested. And at the same time, they would have to go out and purchase a bigger fleet and do all the things that you educated us on that we would have to do in-house. But I do believe that the job of our city is services. It's services. That's what it is. And by doing it in-house, we have more control over it.
There was an RFI.
And we're keeping the money in the city because it's in-house. So the money stays here. We're adding workforce to our city, which we have to worry about because with the new technologies coming out, jobs are threatened. So we're creating jobs for our citizens as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Yeah, real briefly, just to counter councilman Shepherd's point, which I believe was if there's professionals out there that, in his opinion, wouldn't be able to handle our city and therefore we should handle it. I can assure you that if the professionals can't handle it, that we sure as heck could not. I don't think that, I would make it a point to say that we're going to learn the industry in a situation if what you're saying is true, as complex as the city. That's the professionals' job. Again, if it comes down to dollars and cents and it's the same, I would prefer that they do it. But if we're not going to make a decision here today and we're going to request more data, I also think, for me, and I could be wrong, the figures that you have here with the roughly, the $30, for example, that doesn't factor in the capital expenditures or the indirect debt service that the taxpayers are going to be indirectly responsible for, or it does?
That represents the monthly collection cost with the component of disposal, which would bend that $2 and roughly 79 cents adder. So that $30 fee does break out. Do you have a supporting slide, an FAQ slide, that I could share after the presentation? That breaks out the percentage of what is that, what is capital? What percentage of the $30 is related to capital? What percentage is related to personnel, to debt service? Roughly personnel is about 36%, excuse me, sorry, 56%. And the combination of personnel, capital and fuel, that accounts to about 80% of that $30.
Does that factor in also the lost opportunity cost on the land that we're going to have to acquire or use that we otherwise could have disposed of, for example, for sale?
So our facility allowances did take into account the possibility of purchasing land and acquiring land. So I believe it was roughly $10 million that we assumed for a vehicle and maintenance operation on the residential side. About $2.8 million was assumed on the commercial side. So that did take into account if you had to purchase land.
Perfect. It's like you've done this before. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I'll give you the opportunity and then councilmember Shepherd's got his light on again.
Sure. So in the beginning of this, you know, you had asked, you know, if we were looking for a decision or if we had a, and then at the end it was, do we have a recommendation? What we wanted to see at this very basic analysis was buried inside the rates on the commercial side to the residential side. Is there, is there an opportunity to reduce costs by putting all them under one analysis? What the results of the analysis showed us was, it didn't appear to be that. We, it didn't look like if we brought in the commercial into the residential collection that we would be generating enough money that we could have residential collection rates in the 25s or the 24s. It actually showed we would be basically at the market or where the market will be in three to four years. So it really, at this point, is kind of that basic entry-level discussion. And it's interesting to kind of see how some of you came from it from one perspective and others came from it on another. Those who valued service said, maybe it's worth going after it to improve the service for our residents. Those who valued the dollars and the time that said, okay, if it's not a lot of savings here, I don't want the headaches. And so that really is what we needed to hear at the basic level. Because now we can go look at different business models of, you know, two franchises, three franchises versus having one. But what we really needed to know is, was there strong conviction? If we said we were going to be at the market or even a little bit higher, was it even something that was still on the table? And kind of just that high-level discussion, what I'm seeing is, I mean, we don't have a council member here, but it looks like majority said no based on what my yeses and nos on knowing that. So we'll get some more data. We'll refine some more information that was requested. I would like to kind of, as we go towards the next step, we will put forward an actual recommendation from staff. And just so you have an understanding of the things that we would be looking at. It may seem very nitpicky, but it's similar to the line of questions that were asked today. How many trucks do we need? You know, what is the interest rate going to be on this? How many people do we need? Some of the questions that I think at even a higher level, when we're at this entry-level discussion is, do you all even want to have a trash facility in the city of Cape Coral? Because all of those trucks every day are going to be rolling out of the Cape and being stored in the Cape. And our residents are going to see it every day, drive by it every day. So is that something you want to have in our city for the next 30 years after we make this decision? So there's even some more higher-level things to ask yourself. Are you comfortable with those type of discussions before we get down into the weeds? This was provided to just say, here's where the market's going to be at. Is it even something you want to consider? The next layer would be, do you want to have a facility in the city? Do you want, as one councilmember said, do you want us to take, if we don't utilize land we have today, which presume you all know is the 318 acres on Burnsthor. I mean, do you want this on Burnsthor Road? If not, we're going to have to buy property. And then that would be taking additional land off the tax rolls that otherwise, if we had a franchise entity, would be paying taxes. So just, there's still some more higher-level things I think we can discuss and we'll try to guide towards that. We'll get the answers to the questions that you all have. And we'll be okay to get there by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think the other thing to take into consideration, you know, we got, you know, sale of two large properties here in our city. You have Academic Village and you got Seven Islands. So there's going to be a pot of money at some point that we could actually utilize for some of these facilities. And it doesn't have to be debt-generated as well. So that's just something else to take into consideration. And, you know, we got the monies that we're getting from Seven Islands, Academic Village. You know, I would surely support if that was a direction that a majority of us wanted to go in. I would surely want to use some of those monies, maybe for the facilities and things like that, the offset, the expense. But I think we have a lot more data that needs to come forward before we even make that decision. Councilmember Shepherd, I see your light's still on.
Yeah, I think when you get back with the rest of the information and we weigh out all the variables, it's still going to be super close. It's going to be about, we want to control the quality of service versus not. But with something the city manager just mentioned, I just noticed another savings. When a company has to come in the city and leave the city, they're spending more money on energy, more money on wear and tear on their vehicles. That all becomes cost. In-house, having local fleet, a local fleet doing less driving around the city. And as we talked about, I talked to staff about, the communities up north, all the trucks that collect the trash don't drive to the dump. They bring it to a place where it's compacted into a different type of vehicle. So there's less trips leaving the community. You know, so there is other forms of doing the job and doing the process to keep costs down. So I think, like I said, there's going to be a lot of variables and it's going to be close, neck and neck. I think another thing that we should look at, because of the cost of hopping into this, I know as a business owner, when I take on a new idea for my business, I say, do I want to just get my feet wet with this idea? Or do I want to go full bore? You know, maybe this is something that we would want to undertake, maybe in the beginning saying, we're going to take over half the city. And if we're doing half the city and we got to bid out half, that kind of helps us with the bidding process because they already know we're doing half the city. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could look at and measure and weigh out. But I will tell you that when it comes down to the final decision, the costs are extremely close. I'm going to go for controlling it in-house. Not just because of having more control, better service, but having jobs for citizens in our own community and the money staying here as well. Because I know we hear studies about when you do stuff in-house and the money stays, the impact it has on the community with the money not leaving. And that variable was not even considered. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on. I think, Mr. City Manager, you got some direction, how to move forward. And we look forward to future conversations. I think we'll take about a 10- or 15-minute break and then come on back. I think we'll take about a ten or fifteen minute break, uh, and then come on back.[126.57][126.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57][127.57]
Joining us.
He put the delay on, you know, so. All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Joe Patrillo, Parks and Recreation Director, here today to present to you some concepts for Lake Kennedy Racket Center. As construction continues to progress out there, we have to come to a decision on how we're going to operate and maintain that facility, whether it's in-house or if we RFP it out for a company to come in and run it for us. So we figured we could provide you some options of what we have. This is going to presentation going to show up on the screen. We'll go from there. Is it a button up here? Yeah, go press it. Perfect. All right, so I was asked to take a look at some other facilities that operate similar to what we're going to be operating here in Cape Coral. And first one I want to present to you is the Tennis and Pickleball Center in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. It's a city-owned and a city-operated facility. They have 20 clay courts, tennis courts, 10 permanent and six temporary outdoor pickleball courts. They actually run a center court cafe, pro shop, locker rooms, they have onsite stringer, ball machine rentals and event space and catering available. So it's definitely a full-operated facility, similar to what we'll be doing over at Lake Kennedy Racket Center. Most of you are probably familiar with Pickleplex up in Punta Gorda. That is a privately funded 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It's maintained by and managed by the Pickleplex Board. And currently, when I was on the website, they were hiring for a facility manager to operate it because it's been a little bit difficult for the board to operate it. Right now, they have 16 permanent courts and it looks like they'll be expanding to 24 soon. And they leased the land from Florida Southwestern State College. This one I found out, no, it's a Pictona Holly Hill in Holly Hill, Florida. We didn't even know it existed until I did some research on it. This was developed through a public-private partnership. $3 million was actually donated by a private donation to help build the facility and 1.3 million was provided by the city. The city does provide maintenance and pay the utility expenses. It is located on city property and it's operated by a board of directors and nonprofit club Pictona. And they actually have a general manager and five employees working there. Pretty impressive, 49 pickleball courts, 13 of which are covered. And they actually have a one championship court that seats 1,200 people and it can be expanded to 1,600 people for concerts and things. So they definitely have a state-of-the-art facility there with clubhouse and locker rooms. They have a senior activity center, player shop and a restaurant also. This one was interesting because it was actually scheduled to be in Daytona, but the city and the club couldn't come to an agreement. So they ended up going over to neighboring community there and that's why you got Pictona. So it's a pickleball Daytona kind of combination. So it's kind of interesting. Naples Pickleball Center down in Naples, that's owned by the county. It's operated by a management group, Robert Strowman. It did start off as county-operated, but they switched it over to this. They've been contemplating going back to county-operated because it does make a good amount of revenue for the county. But they still have a contract with Robert Strowman. They have 65 courts, six of which are covered. They have an impressive 6,000 members there, home of the U.S. Open Pickleball Championship. They have a welcome center, pro shop and locker rooms that are available. And then I just got one from out of state. It's the Noonan Pickleball at the HOP in Noonan, Georgia. That's owned by the city. The city does manage the grounds and the physical building there, which is kind of more of a pavilion. They have a nonprofit Noonan Pickleball Association that manages the programs and activities. There's 15 courts. The city does rent the courts for revenue for themselves. And then the revenue generated by the pickleball association is through leagues, lessons, clinics and other things. So that's how the nonprofit kind of funds itself. So as you've, as you're well, we are well underway to getting ready to open this facility, the Lake Kennedy Racket Center, which will have 32 pickleball courts, 12 tennis courts, pro shop, pavilion and restrooms. So at this point, we've got to come to a decision on how we want to maintain and manage this facility, whether, like I said in the beginning, in-house or if we RFP this out for a private contractor, similar to what we've just did with the golf course. So I guess we're just looking for some direction on which way we'd like to go.
Okay, I'll open it up. Councilmember Steinkie.
Of all of the examples and the research that you did, thank you. It gives good perspective on a variety of ways. I would tend to lean towards the blend that I saw. We already have equipment for and personnel for facilities, management. So to take care of the facilities, I would see the city being able to do that relatively seamlessly. But as far as actually running the club, making it a successful venue that people want to come to and bring events into and whatnot, I think that needs to be managed by people that know how to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Well, first off, we need 17 more pickleball courts because I thought we were number two in the state and now we'll be number three in the state. So, just kidding. Yeah, I completely agree with Councilmember Steinkie on this one. Maintain it, but let's find somebody else to manage it because we know at some point we're going to be attracting tournaments into that location besides the everyday play that may happen there. And I think people that are, have the experience and are fully equipped to be able to do that makes the most sense. You know, with Pro Parks, with them knowing how to run water parks, that's been a good relationship. And I think having the right people to manage is important for our city and will enable us to get the best out of it. So, that's all.
Councilmember Cummings.
So I just want to clarify, are we picking the ones that we like so far that we're seeing? Because if that's the case, I'm liking the Palm Beach Gardens. And the reason why I'm liking that, because I know we went over the tennis courts as well. I like the fact of the locker rooms. I like the fact that you have a center court cafe, that you even have an indoor facility where you can do luncheons, engagements to also rent out to that center. If this is what you guys are asking, what I'm looking through, in my opinion, I like the Tennis and Pickleball Center in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida.
Mayor.
I'm liking the design. I'm liking what all it has to offer for the variety and knowing where Lake Kennedy sits.
Councilmember?
Yeah.
Can I redirect you a little bit?
Yes.
So what we did, we already had the pickleball and tennis facility designed.
Right.
We brought in a bunch of stuff. So our facility is going to have the pro shop, the pavilions, the restrooms, tennis, pickleball. It's under construction right now by...
Okay, that's where I was confused because I...
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, that's why I'm like, what are we doing here? Okay.
Just a little redirect. So we have a contract awarded. It's under construction by Sunsplash.
Yep.
What we're looking for guidance on today with this item is we're getting to a point where we're either going to have to staff up and manage it internally or we're going to have to put out an RFP to have a company come in and set up programming and run it for us. So we're just looking for some guidance on internal versus out. Similar to the Waste Pro discussion, but this is a lot closer and a little bit smaller of an exercise.
Thanks for clarifying because I was really confused. I'm like, what is going on? Okay. All right. So with that being stated, I'm open for pretty much bringing in a P3 is what you're saying, correct? Yeah, I'm definitely for that.
Yeah, for me, also I think bringing in a, some type of organization that can run that facility is probably going to be better off. You know, some type of P3 opportunity. I want to make sure that when we do that, you know, we are generating some income as a result of that. You know, I don't want to give, you know, just give somebody over the courts and not get any type of revenue in return.
Yeah, so that would be like a pure management contract.
Yep. Okay. All right. Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you. Just a quick question about the Pictona one. It says it's operated by a nonprofit. Would that look the same as a for-profit otherwise? Would have the same types of employees? And I'm intrigued by the fact that it's a nonprofit organization running it.
Yeah, I think the for-profit one's going to have a minimal, they're going to staff it the best they can and maximize what they are going to try and get their revenues back. So I think the nonprofit is an advantage that they have a group of people that can assist with operating it and managing it. So, and obviously expenses have to be the same as revenues. So I think they're just focused on really providing a service to the community and keeping the cost as low as possible.
Right.
It would be similar to the theater.
Right. Okay. I like that model. So, and if that wouldn't work, I think obviously the for-profit P3 would be okay too. Thank you.
It's a direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager.
I believe so. Councilmember Shepherd, did you want to weigh in?
We're not experts in the field.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to item five, marine improvements, land development code discussion, accessory structures without a primary structure. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, my apologies for not having the microphone on. This item is a, we have an element in our land development code regarding ancillary structures as they relate to primary, principal structures. And we're going to have, I think Mike, yeah, Mike is going to present from Development Services on just looking at what the policy was, what the policy is and where we want to go with it.
Good afternoon, or good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers. Mike Strively with the City Planning Division. As the interim city manager said, we are, what we want to do this morning is share what our existing regulations are concerning a very narrow subset of our marine improvement section and compare and contrast that to what our regulations were under the LDC, which carries us up into August of 2019. And then after having that discussion in terms of comparing and contrasting those regulations, we'll open it up for questions and we'll take some direction from you in terms of whether you like what you see under our current code or if you would like to direct us to make some changes.
I'm going to start off and just talk about a couple very general definitions so we all have a sort of a common knowledge base. Marine improvements, I think we have a general idea of that, but I do want to get a little bit into the specifics. A marine improvement consists of a dock, a boat lift, mooring posts or pilings, walkways or other connecting parts. A marine improvement for the purpose of this discussion would not include a seawall nor would it include a boat canopy or the supports associated with a boat canopy. I'm also going to be talking about primary and accessory structures or primary and accessory buildings. So a structure, we define that in our land development code and that is a very broad definition. And a structure is any improvement really which requires a permanent location on the ground. So that would include simple as, something as simple as a pad of concrete all the way to a residential or commercial building and everything in between, like a fence, a gazebo, shed and those types of outbuildings. We talk about primary structures or a principal building. We're going to use those terms interchangeably. We're talking about a main building on the site. And I'm comparing and contrasting that to an accessory building, which is a building that is ancillary or subordinate to a main building on the site. So if you think about a single-family residential lot that has a single-family home, an accessory or auxiliary building would be something like a shed. And then just gives you a better idea visually, examples of marine improvements. You see a walkway here, dock and a boat lift. Now, our current regulations state that except for lawfully existing constructed marine improvements, accessory structures are only allowed on parcels with existing principal structures. So there is a carve-out here to allow for, or, I'm sorry. Except for, let me go back. I'm conflating the past with the existing regulations. The past regulations, which carried us up into 2019, carved out an exception for marine improvements and it allowed marine improvements to occur on sites without a principal building. So for example, a single-family home. Our existing regulations are very much the opposite of that. And those regulations are found in Section 5 of the Land Development Code. And those regulations state in part that boat slips, docks may be constructed by the owner of a waterfront site with adequate waterfrontage where a principal building exists. So it prohibits marine improvements on unimproved sites. So to summarize, city regulations prior to August of 2019 allowed marine improvements on sites without a principal building. And it was guidance from our building official at that time that if a marine improvement was constructed on a site that lacked a principal building, that the city would not allow an electrical permit associated with that marine improvement to occur. And this was primarily to help protect public safety. Our current regulations prohibit marine improvements in sites without a principal building. This provision has been administered somewhat inconsistently in the past as there have been times in the past where we have become aware that a builder or a homeowner may be in the process of applying for a single-family home permit but hadn't done so at the time they filed a permit for marine improvement. So we've proved that conditionally and usually place some type of time restriction on when that filing of that single-family home permit needed to occur. So there are advantages and disadvantages with the current regulations. On the pro-positive side, current regulations ensure that a principal building will be constructed on a site to accompany that marine improvement. It discourages docks and residential zoning districts from being leased or used commercially since we don't require a building there. And this helps protect the character and residential areas of the city. It also would prevent, to the extent that someone wanted to permit a marine improvement on a vacant property and then might want to lease a boat slip, it would prevent people then from visiting that site which is unimproved and then park along the street or in the swale or on an unimproved property, which if that were to occur with any regularity could cause erosion and other types of problems. On the con side, the regulation may lack some flexibility in that it is generally easier to construct a dock and related improvements from the land itself on sites that lack a principal building. So once construction begins on the site, you've mobilized your materials, you've started building the principal building on the site. And then you want to try to begin operations from the land to construct your marine improvement. That may be either very challenging or it may not be feasible. So there are several options, I think, for council to consider. That's part of this discussion. One, you could leave the current, you could direct us to leave the current regulation in place. The second would be to amend the regulation to allow for perhaps some greater flexibility. For example, allow the approval of marine permits for sites without a principal building subject to certain requirements and that could be triggered by the filing of a building permit or the initiation of substantial construction. That would be something that we would have to define in our code. Another option, the last one here, would be to amend the regulation, basically to that which appeared earlier in the Land Use and Development Regulations that allowed marine improvements on sites without principal buildings. So I'd like to open up, open up the discussion for you now. If you've got questions and if you've got direction for staff to proceed on this issue, we would certainly like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. And also just to let the council know, we have some marine industry individuals that are in the room. They didn't realize that they were supposed to talk during citizens input time. Do we want to allow them an opportunity to weigh in on the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So anyone that wants to speak on this topic, you'll get the same three minutes that you would on citizens input. You utilize the podium to my left. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council. Pull my little nose up here. My name is Jimmy Williamson. I am vice president of W.B. Williamson Brothers. We specialize in new replacement seawalls and docks. W.B. employs over 100 men and women, most of them living here in Cape Coral. The livelihood depends on W.B. building seawalls and docks on both developed and vacant land. And it has always been that way since our inception in 1996. We've always been allowed to build on vacant lots. Dock construction on vacant lots is a staple to not only us marine contractors, but the many businesses that participate in the dock construction process along the way. 20% of the docks we build are on vacant lots, $9 million worth this year. And right now, we still have 60 vacant lot docks to build, approximately $2 million worth yet to build. Contracts are signed, deposits are received. I don't know how many of y'all deal with homeowners when they're moving down here, but they're canceling their lease where they parked their boat, they're buying a boat here. There's a one-year, two-year backlog. There's all kinds of things in motion that hinge on if they can put their boat at the lot while their house is being built, blah, blah, blah. We still have $2 million net to build. After all is said and done, they will spend 35 to 100K on a dock. And a huge majority of that money is spent here in the city, the lumber, the electrician, the boat dealer, suppliers, everything I buy here is in the Cape. It's a lot of money every year. It's a huge generation revenue for the city and it's how I feed my family and it's how my employees feed theirs. Many of us depend on the real estate market and one form or another, this city depends on the real estate market. We have friends or family that are realtors, title agencies, surveyors, et cetera. You ask them, a huge factor in the decision process when it comes down to whether the buyer buys or not, comes down to, does the vacant lot have a dock? Or if it doesn't, how long will the permit take? How soon can I have one? The answer to those questions make and break deals daily. Ask any realtor. We are just one of 20 to 30 dock builders out there. So this isn't just isolated to my company. Ironically, right now, we're offering a promotion where if you build a seawall, we'll give you a free 20-foot-long boat dock. So what we're having are people who are sitting on properties, no intentions to develop them, are improving them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up?
Good morning. My name is Austin Peterson. I'm the general manager with Stokes Marine in Fort Myers. Similar to what Jimmy had mentioned, we also build, we're a boat lift, marine, dock, boat lift, seawall installer here in town. Very similar to what Jimmy just mentioned, we have a number of customers that call us up, especially in the Cape with the amount of waterfront properties that we have in the Cape that are, that would like the dock and boat lift to be installed prior to potentially building a house if that's what they're doing. And we are, in the past, we've been able to do it. And as we just mentioned earlier, it looks like back in 2019, that code changed and we're not certain on why that changed. But quite frankly, from a cost perspective, we can put a seawall on a piece of property, but then we have to re-mobilize again in order to put a dock and boat lift on the property, which doesn't make a lot of sense financially for us or for the customer themselves. We met last week actually as an organ, excuse me, as an industry with the city manager regarding just staging lots in Cape Coral and how difficult it is for us to stage our materials. This is another opportunity for us where we have an excellent vacant lot and that, with where the customer wants to build that we could actually utilize and not have to try to find an additional staging lot somewhere else in the Cape itself. Customers are having a difficult time that are trying to build a piece of property and put a dock there with where, you know, alternatives to store their boat, whether or not it's dry storage or something like that. There's very limited opportunities to do that. So we obviously, it's, I don't know if we have the volume that Jimmy has out in parts of the Cape, but we certainly have anywhere from five to 10 every month or so of customers that have vacant properties that would like us to be able to put a dock and boat lift there prior to building a home. And right now, the interpretation of the code has been to where we're not allowed to do that. And we have some customers that are obviously upset with us to what Jimmy's point is, is that's a decision-making process for them if they're going to purchase the lot. So there's other factors at play other than the interest of the marine industry itself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
Good morning, council. My name is Jack Schwartz. I'm the owner and operator of NCS Electric and have been in the city for over 30 years. We wire hundreds of boat lifts a year and today, up until this week, I have never been denied a permit for electric, for a boat lift in a vacant lot. Now, it's just open for discussion right now, but they've already started in the building department denying permits. So I spoke with Michael's office yesterday and they were supposed to call the building department and someone's supposed to get back with me. I haven't heard from anybody yet. But there's a couple of factors. When we do the temporary power and there's no structure on the property yet, that power pole that we put in can then be used for construction power. So it's actually a double benefit. So that's basically what I have, like I said, for 30 years, we've been allowed to do it. So hopefully you guys will continue to let us do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Now opening up the council, councilmember Shepherd.
I'm for the change. It adds tremendous value and brings income to the city. So I'm all for it.
Any other? Could you explain the change? I think the change is...
The rule would be to revert back to the previous policy of allowing us to issue docks and decks.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. It's part of my day-to-day work. It's much more advantageous to the property owner to allow the dock and the lift to be put in prior to the home being there. So logistically for the companies that do the work and financially for the customers that own the property, that should be allowed to be put in before the home. If there were concern that it were being turned into a one or a two-boat marina, we certainly could coordinate with a building permit being issued to be put there if there were going to be power. If someone is just improving their property for resale by putting the boat dock and the lift in, that can be done. The electrical can be stubbed before actual power is brought there. So the consumer certainly can improve the value of their property by having the dock and the lift there. But if you want to prohibit people just putting a boat dock in with no intention of putting a home there, we certainly could hold the power back from that, having the power available if there's not a permit that's in process for a home to be built there. But actually, the work of the work of installing, I think, should be allowed before a home is placed there for staging of the materials and the ability to actually do the work from land rather than by barge.
Thank you. Councilmember Law?
Yeah, this one's real easy. I've lived here my whole life. This has been around for as long as I've been here. I don't anticipate this being an issue. I don't think it has been an issue. A little bit of government overreach, I think, is involved in trying to regulate this now in hindsight. So I would be in support of reverting back to the pre-existing. Thank you.
I guess we have councilmember Cummings.
Favor of reverting it back as well.
Councilmember Hayden?
Revert back.
Councilmember Cosdine. Got the direction you're looking for?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and thanks for everyone who came out this morning. And thanks for everyone who came out this morning. Also, let's move on to item B six, board vacancies and B R C resolution update. I think this is a two-pronged approach. I believe I had asked for a second to work on the board vacancies, and this council had a previous discussion on that, and same goes with the B R C resolution. Councilmember Steenke had gotten a second to work on that. So, councilmember Steenke, I'll let you go first, and then I'll go on my board vacancy end of it.
Okay. Thanks. In the supporting material, rather than taking staff time or our legal department's time, I simply redlined some of the things that I thought would be advantageous to change to the resolution, and that was distributed both by email, and I believe everybody got a hard copy of it. In our previous discussions, and mayor, you'll probably touch on this as it relates to terms and whatnot through all of the committees and councils, I recommended moving back to a two-year term, keeping it staggered as the previous verbiage talks about, but switching it to a two-year term. And then, instead of having one alternate, have two alternates. The work between the proposed budget and the approved budget is a tremendous volume of work, and they meet literally daily for almost six weeks through that. And the opportunity for all of them to be there in, at every one of those review sessions is tough to manage. So, to have two alternates there, you do get two opinions that you wouldn't already get. They're not allowed to vote unless there is a vacancy, and then the alternate would vote for whoever was vacant. But it would allow maintaining seven members at all time voting, one would hope. So, that was a recommendation that I thought I'd make. Down in section six, you'll see some added verbiage just to make sure that everybody knows how that, the recommendation, how it read. It said, "The committee shall attend the scheduled budget review workshops and hearings and meet as necessary from delivery of the proposed budget until final budget approval." And then, the final sentence there would be, "Special meetings may be called by a majority vote of the members of the budget review committee and approval by city council or as requested by city council." And the reason why I inserted the "and approval by city council" was the thought that those meetings, based on the resolution, require city staff time and obviously planning for city staff to be there for taking the minutes and whatnot. Section seven, inserting, "The committee may adopt its own meeting rules and regulations as may be deemed necessary, as long as it doesn't break our charter," you can read that. And then, down where we had some of the issues as far as understanding the scope and intent of the committee, to add the inference to strategic plan into section A, where it would read, "Review of the city manager's proposed budget and asset improvements program and provide recommendations of expenditure and revenue allocations in support of the city's current strategic plan and committed projects." Eliminate C. D would become B with the insertion of, "Where is the reporting responsibility of the committee?" And that would then read, "Review financial management policies and provide recommendations to the city council for revision where appropriate." And the last, the final would become item C. And those would be my recommendations based on my history with the committee and my understanding of what its purpose is.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other lights on, so I guess I'll jump in. I'll jump in real quick. You know, I guess, I think the decision that we have to make first and foremost is, first, you know, do we want to keep the B R C committee in the form that it is now? Make the changes that councilmember Steenke has recommended or go in a different direction? I think that's kind of what we're facing here today. You know, for me personally, I guess my position hasn't changed much from before. I think that there could be a better way to navigate through this process where there's more involvement with the community, where there's, where they are afforded an opportunity to listen in and possibly, you know, send us emails, come and participate during citizens' input. One of the things that I've, you know, and I've been on the budget review committee before, they get some great information. Staff typically has really engaged in trying to get the, get them up to speed as quick as possible. You know, it is a small window of opportunity for them. It is a very complex budget, over a billion-dollar budget. If you look at the complexity and the short amount of time that they have to engage, that's a very small window of opportunity. One of the things that I personally would like to see is to have that engagement that they give them given to us, where we have that engagement throughout the process that may start April, May, once staff kind of starts their defining their budget, you know, because they start meeting with department directors in January and February, and they're trying to vet out that process of what they want, what they need, and how much money is available to them. If we could provide some type of avenue where we, as a council, has that engagement, I think we will be better informed to make the decisions on that one-point-one-billion-dollar budget that we are making, that will also give the, especially if we do it in this room, it's televised, can get that information out to the community, they can watch it either then or go back later and watch it, have that type of engagement. Having seven individuals in a room and that limited amount of engagement, to me, I'd rather have that out as the community as a whole. Not saying we can't have a stakeholders group. You could have the same members as a stakeholders group. They can come in, listen, not only to the information that staff provides, but our dialogue and our interaction between, and discussion between us and staff. And then, at some point, that stakeholders group could still make a recommendation, just like they do today. I think the process could be better, not only for us, it could be better for the community and still have the same outcome with them making a recommendation as a stakeholders group to us. I think that's a much better process for me personally. I think it's a win-win for everybody, and we still pretty much end up giving the stakeholders group that opportunity to make that recommendation. But we also give the rest of the community that opportunity by listening, by hearing all the information, giving them the opportunity to weigh in as well. I'd much rather have the input of two-hundred thousand than avoid seven people sitting in a room. So, that's just me personally. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah. Two budget workshops we had, nobody was here. Nobody participated in public input. Last four public hearings we've had on proposing the last two budgets, nobody was here except the budget review committee. Stakeholders groups are put together at the whim of staff or council just to get an opinion. I'm all for having, I mean, all of our meetings when we talk about the budget are open to the public. You know, that hasn't changed. If you want to have workshops ahead of time and talk about the budget, that's great. The more information we can circulate, that's great. The video that we put together to explain the budget to people for more information is great. Those are all information points, as is the budget, budget review committee. As everybody knows, I was against removing any of the committees, especially with what happened to budget review. Councilmember Steenke, with your changes, would the budget review committee initiate their work? When the budget book came out, is there a month in mind that you had when they would start their discussions about the budget? I'm just trying to understand, because the way it's worded, you've got the budget review workshops and hearings, so I'm assuming those weren't just the budget, the three budget workshops that we had that previously included the budget review committee and then the public hearings? Were you thinking of starting at a particular time?
Thank you for asking the question. Yeah, when the thought of eliminating the committee came across our path, there was talk of, and I asked for having something in writing, that we would have these public workshops, if you would, if that if, that if we were going to eliminate the committee and citizens could come and hear the directors present, you know, what they were asking for and why, and in what project it was. I'd said, before I would ever say that we should eliminate the committee, I want to see that that's in writing, that that is going to happen. And so, as the mayor said, to have these in this room rather than just in a room with seven people, I think is a smart thing. And so, those aren't in writing yet, those aren't meetings, but if they were to be put there, then absolutely that would be added to the expectation of where this committee would convene. So, there would be meetings prior to the actual...
Let's say we start a budget discussions in March or April, and we set up maybe three workshops over the period of time...
The expectation would be that they would be there as well.
Or the period of time that they would be included in that.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, instead of them, when they have that two- or three-week period where they meet pretty much every day before we get into the budget workshops, that would replace, those meetings would replace that?
What I would envision was, is if they were to be here at that meeting in March, that they would then schedule a meeting amongst themselves to sit and then discuss and review what they heard in that workshop...
Okay.
To then provide that input to us.
Okay.
And so, then, another workshop, you know, would happen with maybe some other departments. They would attend that, they would schedule a meeting. That's why it's said that they can schedule a meeting based on the majority vote of the budget committee approved by us. So, after that meeting, they'd say, "We'd like to schedule a meeting on such and such a day. Can we have staff there to take minutes?" And then, the answer would be yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, they're free to me if they want to meet. Hey, let's meet twice the next week, talk about, we had a lot of information come at us. I think we need a couple two-hour meetings to discuss it...
Correct.
...to go from there.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to see more about specifically how it would roll out. The one thing I am for is keeping the budget review committee in place. You know, how we roll out their participation, looks like it still needs to be brought into focus a little more clearly. And, you know, and I'm assuming as we get to the point where, however this goes, you know, I may be in the minority on this and wanting to keep, and the rest of my council members want to make it a stakeholders group, which I wouldn't support, but I would certainly want to look at how this is polished and how it moves forward with a new committee, meeting in workshops, having separate meetings to discuss what they heard and possibly make recommendations from that, and then flowing right into the budget, two or three budget workshops where the, basically, the final decisions are made before we get to the two public hearings in September. So, I would look forward to seeing this in a more polished version about exactly how it would roll out. You know, the other stuff, picking a chair to alternates, you know, all that's fine, number of members, two years, you know, I don't have any problems with that.
If you'll remember, the issue was around whether it's just an edict to meet monthly. And that was where, that was where part of the problem was, is then what do you do every month? And so, the intention was, was to have the expectation of the meetings that they would have and why.
Well, and that's why I chose to just focus on that, because I think there were things they could do every month. But I'm not going to get back into that discussion again. I'm just going to focus on what's in front of us and when the process would start with them and how they would be involved all the way through the final passage of the budget.
Any other comments? I think we, as a council, got to kind of get a consensus here, the direction that we want to go. So, I think we all have to participate in the conversation to see what direction we're going to give councilmember Steenke, who we've given a second to. So, with that, I'll leave it open. Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for a more modern approach, doing away with how we did it in the past and having more involvement and transparency and going more with the elected officials and...
Councilmember Cosden?
This is my eighth budget cycle, and I have never had a problem with the B R C, so I'm fine keeping it. I'm happy with councilmember Steenke's changes.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings?
This is kind of a tough one. I would like, I feel like we should be more involved in it. So, just saying, I keep it transparent, open to the public, kind of like what you were sharing, and more involved in more of the discussion with it as well, so.
Yeah, I don't want to get, go too far down that path. Got to be cognizant of the fact that this isn't a voting meeting, and so, whatever we decide here, it's counterintuitive because we've got another council member that will be here the next time. That may sway our decision one way or another. So, for that reason, I'm not going to go down the path of whether we should or should not have the B R C. I think it's inevitable that we will continue to have it for some period of time. So, with that being said, if these are the changes that are proposed by the current liaison based on his interactions, albeit limited, I don't have any issue with them as presented.
I think that kind of gives you the direction you're looking for there. Councilmember Steenke?
Yes, is it being recommended to me to add those preliminary workshops to this? I think that's kind of a staff, staff determination of whether...
Yeah, I think probably, I would say probably the best thing to do now is maybe get with staff, because, of course, they would have to change their approach first. So, before we start putting something in a revised resolution to come forward for a vote, I think you'd probably have to work that out with staff, try to develop with our city manager what the process is going to look like, and then maybe you can craft your defined approach, which is exactly what councilmember Hayden, I believe, is looking for, and then bring it back. And if you want to bring it back to another council meeting first before we bring it back, I think we have a little bit of time because we're, you know, we're wrapping up the budget cycle. So, if you feel that that may be better to bring it back for another council meeting for a little further discussion, committee of the whole, I think that would probably be great, and then we can put it on the following week's agenda.
We'll do it.
Yes.
I have a question for councilwoman Steenke.
Okay.
Can you draft two separate ones, like an A and a B?
No.
No?
What I'll do is I'll take, I'll take all the conversations we had here, I'll meet with the city manager, financial services director, and take a look at what it would take to make sure that we add some type of a forum here prior to the budget being delivered. So, there could be those explanations to us and the B R C in attendance, and then a public that wants to attend as well, and then, you know, and add that into what I've already got. Where it was legal to, where it's split it properly, and then we'll bring it back to the cow to see if there would be any other additions or subtractions before we bring it up to a vote in a regular meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. All right. And the second aspect of this topic is the board vacancies. I know we had a discussion on that. You know, the boards that we still have in place, I'll just read down them real quickly. And most of these, except for the B R C, is by Florida statute, they have to be, we have to have these boards. We have the C R A, Health Facilities Authority, Planning and Zoning, Police Pension Board, Fire Pension Board, General Pension Board, Affordable Housing Committee, Audit Committee, Charter School... Affordable Housing Committee, Audit Committee, Charter School Governing Board, Transportation Advisory Committee we have as well, but I think that one's pretty much set in stone, and the Community Development Block Grant Committee. I know this council had had a discussion on an even approach. You know, you have some of these boards that are four years, some are three years, some are two years. I think what we were trying to do is try to make it equal across the board as far as terms and term limits. I know we had changed within the last two years as far as making every term two years only. So what I just wanted to do before I work with the city attorney's office, I'll give you what my expectation was out of the conversations that we've already had, get any more input here today, and then work with the city attorney's office to draft something, to bring it back. We had talked about these particular boards being appointed in December, all of the boards. We had talked about a rotation in the beginning, where at first we'll do two years and one year as far as appointments. That way we can get that rotation worked in. So that would start in December, the first meeting in December. I think the reason that we decided that is a majority of these boards are boards that make a recommendation to council. Council changes, you know, as we all know, every two years. So I think the first, first meeting in December would be a good opportunity to make those changes as far as whatever council is seated at this time moving forward. So I was thinking two-year terms for everyone, two-year terms for everyone. And I think that's how the discussion went. Now, I will tell you that I've spoken to some of the members of the pension boards. And they prefer to keep just on the pension boards, four-year terms. The reason being, they said, was because it takes so long to get up to speed on those boards and to really know the information. If we limit to two-year terms and two-year terms, that's only four years. They said it takes a couple of years just to get acclimated, to really understand and be able to engage in a, in a conversation and make decisions, good informed decisions. I think those three boards, maybe we leave those as four-year terms for two terms because of the complexity that goes along with those boards. So they, I, I will tell you that those individuals that I spoke with were, were highly concerned if, if we went to two-year terms. So my recommendation would make the, all the other boards two years, two-year terms. Keep in the three pension board four-year terms for two years. That was going to be my recommendation, and with that, I'll open it up for council, Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, but just to give you an example, let's, let's just use the Audit Committee as an example. I'm a liaison, there's five people. So in December, we would, depending on where people are at in the rotation right now, whether people are, are coming up or not, we would, let's say, pick, appoint three people for two-year terms and two people for one-year terms, so they keep, we keep the stagger.
Yes.
And rotation in place, so it'd be something like that.
Exactly, and for me personally, how I would probably look at it, if you're, if you're appointing the same person, now this is just me personally, if I'm appointing the same person, I would probably try, whoever had the most amount of time left on their term, I would probably, for me, put them in the two-year spot.
With the most amount of time?
Yeah, because if, say we appointed somebody last year, and they got three more years.
Right.
I would personally put that individual in the two-year spot. But that's just me.
Okay.
But that is exactly how, you know, I thought that the process would work.
Yeah, and you know, with the pension boards, you know, with, in order to go through a complete cycle of, even with the union contracts, you know, you'd need to at least be three years on there, so, yeah, that, that makes sense. So I, I don't, I don't have any issues with that.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. In general, I'm certainly in favor of staggered replacement, if you would. You need history there that you bring forward, and it does take time for people to get up to speed. So in, in any case, I think the staggered approach is a way to go. I think on the larger groups, you could do it more than just split in half. You could do it split in thirds, so that, so that you could have those longer term periods there and, and only have a segmented replacement every year. And last is, I think, I think we should take into consideration, or let's just say never forget, that these are all volunteers, and things in their lives change. And so, for instance, in the Audit Committee, if a, if a term length is four years with two terms, that's a potential of eight years. I would be more in favor of giving the opportunity for more terms and have a lesser commitment on the term length. So I, I, just on that one, for instance, I would rather see a two-year term length and four terms that would make up those eight years, so that if something happens in that volunteer's life that causes them to not be able to meet that commitment, that they wouldn't, that they wouldn't be obligated to or feel that they had to resign or, you know, whatever. So any, any of those where there's larger numbers, I would, I would support more, you know, alternating than just half and half. And then on the, on the smaller boards, I would be in favor of lesser term lengths and more opportunities to renew, if you will, seeing as it's our, you know, prerogative whether we renew them or we don't. That's, that's what I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Okay, and just so council knows, looking down the board sheet here, we have two boards. We have two boards that have seven members, planning and zoning, and a budget review. And we have one board, which is the Affordable Housing Committee, has 11 members. Charter School has seven, and everything else has five. So for me, just to try to make it equal, I was just going to do three and two, or, or four and three. I just think that's an easy approach. You start adding more levels. I think it just kind of compounds the problem myself, but this, this body will make that decision. I don't see any other lights on, so hopefully we can have some additional input, so we can.
Remember with audit, the council member is actually a member of that committee, so however the language goes.
Right. So Councilmember Long or Cummings?
I don't have any particular issue with the way that the mayor presented it. I think we've been working on this for some time, but to me, that makes the most sense moving forward. And so I would be in support of that if we, if we had a consensus to move forward in that direction.
Councilmember Kaz?
I'm not, you know, married to any on this, but I do want to say that I think staggering terms is important.
Okay. Councilmember Shepherd?
Staggering terms.
Okay, all right. I think I got the direction I need to bring it back. Councilmember Stanky, did you have a follow-up?
I was just going to say, at, at the very end there, you reviewed all that, and you said, you'll try to standardize everything to go to two-year terms and three, a three-term limit, I, I wouldn't be very big with that.
Okay.
Yeah, did you have term limits?
Two, two, two-year terms, that's what we all talked about before. Okay, that gives me the directions. I'll work with the city attorney's office to, we'll draft that up and, and bring that back as well. Maybe what we'll do is, Councilmember Stanky, once you get your, everything together, we'll bring them back at the same time. We'll have that follow-up discussion for both, and then everything looks good, we'll just move at the next meeting for both of them. All right. All right, next item on the agenda, or the last item on the agenda, is council remote participation discussion. Put this back on here, I know we've, we had a little bit of discussion about this before. Whatever direction that we go in as a council, I think it has to be well-defined in our policies. It's not now. So hopefully, you know, we can come up with a consensus, how we want to handle this. Because when you read our council rules and procedures, it's not defined, and I think it should be. Even if it's a direction where I may not agree, I do think it needs to be defined and be crystal clear. That way we all know what the expectation is. You know, for me, you know, it's no surprise. I think that the only thing that we have to do as a council, the reason that we were elected, was to sit in these chairs and represent our constituents and make the arguments and vote accordingly. I do not think that, for me personally, you should be doing that remotely. Our city manager, our city auditor, and our city attorney, they're here every week. We should be here. We get six weeks off in the summer, we get about six weeks off in the winter. I know I've been here five and a half years, I've rearranged my schedule around those six-year hiatuses. I've even taken it to a point where, when my mother was dying, I left here and got on a plane at nine o'clock at night on a Wednesday after our meeting, so I could be at her bedside until Wednesday morning when I flew back. Did that for six weeks. Luckily, I got back at 11:30 at night, was able to hold her hand for 15 minutes before she passed. The reason that I did that is because of the level of commitment that I have to my community and my constituents. So that's where I set the bar. I'm not saying you have to set the bar there, that's where I've set the bar. I've been here five and a half years, participated remotely two times, both times I was attending Florida League of Cities events. To me, if you're away on city business, you should be able to participate remotely. I don't think that you should be penalized because you're representing our city somewhere outside the city, no matter what organization it is. That should be the only other time. If you are not either in a frame of mind, frame of health, whatever the case may be, to be here and be present, then probably you shouldn't participate remotely. If you've taken it upon yourself to schedule some other type of function, no matter what it is, then for me, I think, go take care of that function. And for whatever reason. We, we all know the charter, you know, and, and our rules and procedures, if you read through it, we were supposed to make every effort possible to be here and participate in a meeting. That's what our council rules say today. Our charter says, you know, unless we miss three meetings in a row, there's not a whole lot we can do. So if you really think about it, the only expectations that we have set is we have to be here every third meeting. That's what our charter says. I don't agree with that, but it is what it is. Our council rules said that we should make every effort to be here, and I think we should. Things come up, life sometimes throws curveballs at us. Our kids might be sick, our husband or wife might be sick, our significant, whatever the case may be, things come up. I understand if we have to miss a meeting. But I think as far as our rules are concerned, we have to set the threshold where we need to serve our community and serve it in a way that meets their expectations. So that's, that's where I'm at. Whatever we decide to do, whatever the majority is, I just think that we need to define it in the rules so we all know crystal clear what the expectation is for all of us. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I, I agree. In 2019, they made an attempt to do that, it just, it just didn't get that far. It should be defined, and I agree with mostly everything that you said. Our responsibility is to be here. But I also think that if you have a case, a special case where a person can't be here, whether it's special circumstances or city, and you're going to have to define official city business, I don't think I would define Florida League of Cities as official city business. That's a choice that people make to go to a conference. If it's a, if it's a county meeting that may have something to do with the CDBGDR. But, you know, and, you know, you may disagree with that, you know, that Florida League of Cities is official city business. Could be, could be considered that, could be not. The only thing I can't get past and is, if a person can't be here, and you deny that person the right to, to achieve his other main duty, which is to participate in votes, if you deny that council person the right to vote, you know, I still have a problem with that. Special circumstances, illness, or whatever. You could be, you could have had COVID and been in a physical capacity to still participate in a meeting. The rule, you know, the, remote rules were put in initially because of COVID, and that was to protect other people from that person that may have COVID mainly. But defining what that person's symptoms were, and whether or not they were able to participate in a council meeting, you know, that depended on each, each individual case. Starting with official city business, starting with certain legal ramifications that may come out if we deny a person from participating in a meeting, I think all has to be looked at as we move forward with that. But the general thing, the general point, the general theme that you made, something should be in, in our rules and procedures, procedures about. We may disagree on how that content is, is put in, but I think so that we know and how it's defined, and so that it's clear moving forward, you know, will be important for this body.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention real quickly, I had a discussion with the city attorney yesterday regarding, and I, I, maybe I'll let you elaborate a little bit, you know, about certain HIPAA-type concerns that we may have. And he and I had had a discussion, and maybe a good route, that if anyone that wants to participate remotely meets the criteria, the threshold of some federal requirements, that we have a mechanism in place that, hey, number one, that particular council member notifies the city attorney's office, hey, this is the, the reason that I can't make it, I meet the federal threshold, and let his office make that decision whether that particular council meeting, for that particular meeting, meets the threshold. So he and I had that discussion, so I'll let you elaborate a little bit.
Yeah, and, and just so that you all understand, and I want to make sure that it's, it's clear, the law as it stands right now, at least in Florida, that, you know, someone can appear remotely, and that remotely could be via Zoom or some other type of mechanism, as long as there's a physical quorum present. And as, you know, as, as the, the council moves forward, it certainly would be prudent to memorialize that in your rules so there is no ambiguity or uncertainty. In reference to the question, I think that was presented by Councilmember Walsh during the irregular council meeting about protections of the ADA, I have in fact verified that of, of the ADA, there's Title II and there's Title I. Pursuant to Title II of the ADA, which would control this specific matter, it does mandate that an elected official can invoke Title II of the ADA. And assuming that they have a qualified condition, they are permitted to have certain accommodations. And there's a case specifically, that was in 2020, that specifically recognized the application of Title II to an elected official, and a reasonable accommodation there was to appear either telephonically or by another medium, and that other medium was Zoom. And there was a specific order by the district court judge enjoining the, the council from that prohibition. So that is exists, and I'm saying that to you folks, because ultimately, I've, I've done labor and employment in my past. I've made that decision whether or not someone is in fact qualified under the ADA, and what a reasonable accommodation would be. So if there was a will to do that, I would ultimately kind of craft that to recognize that in order to ensure the protections that that information does not get out publicly. It'll be a decision that'll be made by myself or my designated.
And I did make that change when I provided the backup material and highlighted it just for, for discussion purposes. But with the additional information that the city attorney provided, if that. if that was a direction that we decided to go in, I would make sure that that would be incorporated as well and that the city attorney's office would make that decision. Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me start by saying I was surprised and extremely disappointed last Wednesday. Through campaigning and up until last Wednesday, the opportunity to participate remotely occurred every time it was requested. And so in those nine months after election, I've never missed one meeting. And it was simple geography that caused me not to be able to make that meeting. I, and I'll explain why I was where I was, and it has to do with what I'm about to say. I think to say that we are paid to be here in these seats, I don't totally agree with that. I believe we are paid to understand the issues of our city, understand the things that confront our citizens, understand things that we need to do between now and 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now, so our city's prepared for the future. And so the amount of attention paid to being prepared for these meetings, researching information necessary to have a knowledgeable vote when the issues come up, that's what I believe we are paid to do. And I believe there's a difference between participating and being here. In my nine years, I have seen people be here that were absolutely not prepared to participate. They didn't know the material. They'd not done their research. And them being here was, in my opinion, useless. What would be city business, I think, is anything that allows us to be better prepared to bring information and perspective to the decisions that we need to make, which leads me to where I was. And I was in Orlando because I sit on the Board of Directors for Florida Realtors. One of the big topics that we were dealing with there was actually lobbying for dollars from the state to help with septic-to-sewer conversion. There's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars that potentially could be allocated in that effort, and I would be one of those votes that would determine whether that's where those resources were placed to lobby on Tallahassee for funding for that. And so I still wanted to participate. And thanks to modern technology, I could have participated. And not only was I prepared for every item on the agenda, but I also was able to arrange my schedule where I was to participate by Zoom, and staff took the time to make sure that through technology, I would be able to do that. And then I was denied my ability to do that. So let's launch ourselves into the current world of what technology is available for us. Otherwise, let's forget emailing. Let's forget using our phones. Let's realize where technology has brought us. And where it's brought us is an ability to participate without actually physically having to be here. So if Councilman Long, if there was a Florida bar conference that you needed to be at in Tallahassee or Orlando or wherever you needed to be, that would better prepare you to bring a perspective of someone from the legal field to the decisions that we had to make, I hope you go, and while you're there, I hope you can participate remotely when it's your turn to bring the knowledge that you have and the perspective you have on the issues and vote. Councilmember Shepard, if it has to do with the environment and resiliency, and if you can be better prepared to bring your diverse addition to this group, I hope you go. And if there's any way to participate remotely while you are there doing that, enhancing your ability to bring your skills and expertise and, you know, your segment of all the decisions that we have to make, then I would hope that you would participate remotely. Certainly, COVID proved to us that you can still keep the wheel rolling if you can't participate physically. So to look technology in the face and say, "Let's not use this technology," I have a problem with that. And if there is an individual that misuses the privilege to participate remotely, let's deal with that individual separately and not throw the baby out with the bathwater. And, you know, the definition of city business is not just being here. And that's what I have to say.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Councilwoman Stanky, but unfortunately, there have been people that has taken this and abused the system for the rest of us. So yeah, so sometimes you have to make a standard to show, well, thanks for the continuous, ongoing. It put everyone at a punishment or basically having to set a new standard. So I believe that since COVID has taken place, there have been people that has taken Zoom and using it at their convenience, which has ruined it for the rest of us. So yeah, I'm in agreement with you. I am. But also, you have all these leaders of the city, they show up. They're here. That's the point that I was making. And yes, keeping, you know, staying involved with the city every day, understanding, absolutely, is also part of it. But also, being here on Wednesdays is a huge part. They're all here. I've never, not one time, seen one of them zoom in or call in. Not one time. So yes, you made valid points, but I feel like we're making valid points too. And, you know, it's four years. That's it. This is not a permanent position. It's four years. It's a commitment you made. That's just how I look at it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I agree with everything you said, Bill. I believe that we can't say city business because we all have different backgrounds and different expertises, and that's why the citizens picked us. Sometimes because of our talents, they want us to bring that talent and be used to the city, you know. And so I agree with you. So I think it's really, I think if we even had that rule that it had to be city business, I mean, there's business people in the business world that, you know, create reasons to say their vacations for business for IRS reasons. You know, I looked at this product when I was there. You know, they all find loopholes, and I think the same thing would happen here. I think what the problem is, is there have been people in the past that have really taken advantage. And when we would hear through the grapevine why they didn't show up, it was like, oh, I went on a cruise or a tasting trip or, you know, this or that. And, you know, it's kind of, we're a team and we want to be successful. And, you know, we all understand that we all have hardships sometimes, and we all have reasons that we miss. But I think it's more, we're trying to figure out a way to cut down on the abuse. And how we can do that, I don't know. I looked at some other professional organizations where the people are very important to the organization, and sometimes it's so many misses a year with not having to say anything at all. You know, no excuse at all, just you're not making it. But I think where it is right now, I believe what Councilman Cummings stated, that since we started doing it at COVID, everybody said, wow, you know, I don't have to worry about, you know, getting somebody to watch my kids or, you know, I don't really feel good today or had a long day at work. I don't feel like going in. I'll just sit on the couch and participate in the meeting. I don't, I think that's what we're trying to get a grasp on of abuse and people looking at our position as putting more of an important emphasis on it and understanding the responsibility and how, you know, a lot of people, tens of thousands, have voted for each and every one of us to be here and they count on us, you know. So I don't have the answer, but I really think it's, it all started where we see it being abused. It reflects on all of us. I know when certain people aren't here. I get people, oh, they didn't come in again? Oh, yeah, that's their norm. Every three or four meetings, they don't show up. I think it looks bad for us. How we create, you know, a job description, it might really be difficult. I understand that. But I think we just want to, and maybe it's not having any rules at all. Maybe it's just bringing it up, hey, hey, team players, let's be more aware. I don't know. But I agree with a lot that was said by everybody. It also, since I've been here, and I haven't been here that many years, but I've had situations where councilpeople didn't think non-voting meetings were important. And then when we're at the voting meeting, we're wasting all kinds of time because they're asking staff all kinds of questions because they weren't here for the meeting to be educated. So we all had to pay a price, you know. So I think we're just trying to bring attention to the importance that we all do our best. And I agree with you stating, you know, why you missed, and it is important because that's why you're here, because of your knowledge and background. And that's why people wanted you in that seat, because they see the value in the knowledge that you have and what you do for a living and bringing it to the table of our council. So we just got to get a grasp on it, and I don't know how. But I think we definitely do have a problem. I think we have people that miss for just ridiculous reasons other than just not wanting to come in. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, the other thing I'd mentioned in the other meetings too, there's no other municipality in the county that allows you to participate in a meeting and vote. There is, I believe it's City of Anita, that you're allowed to participate, but you can't vote. I know Astero, County Board of Commissioners, you can't, you can't, they don't have a remote participation. Sanibel does not, I don't believe. I spoke with Councilmember Smith the other day. I think they used to do remote participation during COVID, but since that train's kind of left the station, they don't anymore. You know, so that could be an opportunity. I think what we need to try to decide today, yes or no on remote participation. If the majority says yes, then we got to try to define that. If the majority says no, we've kind of answered the question for ourselves. So I think that's the first question. At some point today, we'll go down the line and see where the majority lands on that yes or no. If it's on the yes side, then we got to try to figure out the rules of the game. If it's on the no side, we kind of know what the rules of the game are. So yeah, I think that's what we got to try to get out of today's discussion. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. You know, just because you do something other people don't do, doesn't mean you're crazy. It just means you're first. And so the, you know, the thought of, we have in our expectations excused and unexcused absences. And so I know for me, to participate remotely, I know about that weeks in advance and why I would need to participate remotely. I've been able to massage my schedule for nine and a half months where I didn't need to do that. But this one was not something I could massage. So I would have been more than happy a week ago, two weeks ago, a month ago, to say, by the way, I'm going to have to participate remotely because I need to be in Orlando. Now, I absolutely agree, oh, I had a rough day at my other job today, so I'm just going to participate on the couch. Nope, I don't agree with that. So I don't believe it should be item number X on the agenda. Do we let this person participate remotely or not? Because staff has already spent the time to make sure that the connection was there and that it could be done. That was a waste of their time Wednesday, and I feel bad for it. So I think if someone, and I will be in support of being able to participate remotely. But if someone is going to participate remotely, they're going to know about it well in advance. And so that should be brought up in a prior meeting for it to be voted on then. If you have to vote on it, if that's what's going to be required, then that certainly can be done well ahead. And the rationale for why, you know, would be there. And whether it's Florida cities or anything else, there's a number of things that I know when we bring the schedule out at the beginning of the year have already been considered. Oh, we can't have a regular meeting then because this is happening. Well, that's hard to know for eight people when all of that is, when every conflicting event is going to happen. So to give eight people the latitude to say, hey, I want to participate, but geographically, I can't be in that seat, and here's why. It may be that your daughter's getting married on a Thursday. I don't know. But if that's the case, I wouldn't want anybody on this dais to miss their daughter's wedding and they needed to be in Indianapolis that day. And they want to take the time out of being there with their family to participate and fulfill the promise that they gave their constituents, that they'd be involved in the issues and be able to vote? That's improper denial, in my opinion. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think we still have Councilmember Long and Cosson to hear from. And then we'll go to the second rounds. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I don't have a real particular issue one way or the other with how we proceed forward. You know, I just think at this point, because of some of the issues that we've raised with ADA and HIPAA and those sorts of things, that even if we did make a stance to move forward and not allow remote participation, in reality, we would more likely than not, if we chose, be able to participate by using one or two of those inclusions. And, you know, even more so if we talk about city business and now how we define that and whether that does or does not include X, Y, and Z. It just seems like the lines continue to get more and more blurred, and we dilute with every iteration of this discussion, the ability of ourselves to prohibit remote participation. And so for that reason, I wouldn't be opposed to just allowing it to continue on and hoping that all of us up here have the same understanding that we would do those requests with respect and on a limited basis.
Councilmember Cosson?
Thank you. I kind of feel the same way. I think we should take it on a case-by-case basis. And I do think that there are good reasons and there are bad reasons. I was happy to hear what the city attorney said about the ADA and HIPAA because we should be protecting disabled council members now and future. But that's only going to be limited cases, so again, I think it should be case by case. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one thing that Councilmember Stanky brought up could be a good alternative. Like you said, a lot of people know of instances in the future that they, could be a geographical conflict, like you said. You know, maybe something similar to what you said is the meeting prior or before that meeting day, that you bring it up at council and say, hey, you know, I got to go to XYZ or I can't make it or whatever the case may be. And then we vote on it and approve it, then you know, you won't have the door slammed in your face kind of like you were trying to say. So that could be an alternative as well, you know. That way, if there is one of two things, either it's pre-approved and then you can participate, or if there's a federal criteria that's met, that the city attorney will let us know at the beginning of the meeting. Hey, you know, this individual has us know at the beginning of the meeting, hey, you know, this individual has meet the criteria set forth in your guidelines and they can participate remotely. You know, so that, that could be, you know, an alternate as well.
The only issue with that, I guess, is we couldn't pre-approve a sudden illness. So then how do we handle that?
Yeah. Well, I mean, honestly, if I'm sick, I'm not, I don't want to be, that's me. If I'm, if I'm to the level where I'm sick, I want to be in bed. But, you know, so I think that's our options on the table. So with that being said, let's see, we've already talked, Councilmember Cummings, did you have a second conversation?
Yeah. So.
Yep. Well, I'm going through the lights now.
So I definitely have an understanding, but I just want to remind you guys that if, if there's not stopping measures, one day, everyone's going to be on Zoom and no one's going to be here. I ran my campaign on being here. The biggest thing I heard out there in Cape Coral, will you show up to the meetings? That's all I heard. That's what my campaign was ran on, was, was being here. And now we're talking about going through Zoom. I just feel like you've got eight weeks of hiatus total in a year, we can work around those eight weeks. This is just how I feel. I mean, you know, I, I stated it last week, I'm going to state it again, we, we knew what was expected when we ran and I feel like we should fulfill our duties. And yes, I mean, depending on what Alex states, but once again, you're going to open up another thing where there is, is, is going to be continuous, continuous, continuous. I feel like, you know, and, and, and look, Councilman Stanky, I'm telling you, a lot of us didn't want to do that, but we had a set of presents too on everything. And I, I understand, we all understand, but it also gets to the point where it gets, it's getting abused. So yeah, so we're trying to figure out a way that's fair for everybody and that's what's hard. Unfortunately, not everyone thinks like that. But I'm just saying, I ran my campaign on being here, so I'm here. And I'm hoping we can come up with something that is fair, but also, you know, AI has kind of taken over, artificial intelligence. People want interaction. They want interaction. That's why we're here. So, I don't know, just really think about, just really think about it, is, is all I'm saying. And if you have to be somewhere and it's on a Wednesday, and yet you're at a conference, you shouldn't have to worry about being here. You should be at that conference and, and, and doing like you said, under, you know, trying, trying to get that money for the UEP and not worrying and dialing in. We would understand that. So I'd rather you focus on that to, to get us millions and millions of dollars to bring back here than, than, than coming in on this, you know, on, on a Wednesday. But that's just my opinion on how I feel. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to provide a, a level of clarification. As it stands right now, the law mandates that there must be a fiscal quorum present. That has been the interpretation of the Attorney General's office. So there'd be, there would be no legal, just to clear that up, there would be no legal mechanism where this board can take any action if there was not a fiscal quorum present. So that means that there has to be at least a minimum of you folks being physically here by law for there to be any legitimate action taken. And I just want to make that clear. So four of you couldn't be here. Four of you, four of you couldn't appear via Zoom, that wouldn't be sufficient.
Aye.
Right, right. Right. Three could be, yes. So four of you were by Zoom, that would be legally.
That would have to be sitting in the seat. Councilmember Shepherd.
I think one thing we can implement, I like the idea of knowing in advance, like, hey, I'm not going to be here, I'm going to this convention and telling the council. And if they can't do it verbally at a, at a meeting, maybe an email letting everybody know. I will tell you what I was very uncomfortable with is, what I've always been uncomfortable with, is when we're asked to vote on approving a council member for not being here, when I, I have no idea why they're not here, that, that was very uncomfortable. Even in your situation, part of my vote was, was to bring a sight to the, the overall problem. But I think it, I think if, I think then we don't really need rules because now if, if somebody just wants to call out to lay on the couch, if they have to email all their teammates and say, I'm not going to be here tomorrow because I just don't feel like coming in and they don't have, you know, then when we vote, we have an understanding and, and we were given the power by the constituents to vote on things. I think if we all knew what the circumstance was and was hearing it from the individual, we, I think we're all grown up enough to, to have a good decision. Then I don't think we need all the, the details. That might be a way, because like I said, you know, to sit here and vote on it, oh, so-and-so is not going to be here, finding out right then and there at that moment, not knowing, you know, that they're going to a wedding or they're at a convention or they're just going to a wine tasting, you know? You know, it gives us the ability to, to judge appropriately instead of just coming up with a rule list. I mean, I don't know, but that's easier. That's it.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I'm getting a little concerned, we're throwing out words like abuse, abusing the system and I'm getting a little bothered that we're labeling this council in a non-factual way, that we're not coming to meetings, committee of the halls are regular meetings. So I will make a request, Mr. City Manager, if you would work with the city clerk, I would like to see the attendance records of this council since November 16th, 2020, for committee of the hall meetings, regular meetings, and the budget workshop meetings.
And special meetings? Did you say special?
Special meetings. Because I'd really like to have it on the record, certainly with committee of the hall meetings and regular meetings, that we haven't been abusing the system, that there have been two or more members or there's been a string of one member missing all these meetings. It could have been a tag placed on past councils. I don't believe it's the case with this council, but I would like to see it on the record. Thanks.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. I just wanted to assure city council, when I was making arrangements to participate remotely, the first question that was asked was, let me make sure that we're going to have a quorum. So city staff does, does know that, that that is required. And, and the whole thought was, let me make sure someone else isn't participating remotely and see if we got a problem. So our staff knows.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I, I think we're getting a little carried away here and we're, we find ourselves, I think, talking in circles. If you ran your campaign on being here, then be here. At the end of the day, I think we're all adults and, and for me at least, I know we try to hold each other accountable, but I'm accountable to the electorate. And so I think if the, the electorate has an issue with my particular attendance or any council member's particular attendance, then, then they'll take that up at the, the voting booth in the next election. Frankly, like Mr. Stanky said, Councilman Stanky, a lot of the work that we do isn't necessarily here. For me, a lot of the work that I do is outside of this council. With that being said, I, I do make it a priority to be here. But sitting here and pointing fingers back and forth and saying you should be here and in this form or that form, I think at the end of the day, the residents, if they have a particular issue with that, then that would be something that they can address at the polls. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on down the line for the yes or no, or if you got a recommendation and go from there. Either leave, leave it the way it is, pre-approved or whatever.
In my opinion, we should give a reason if we're asking for remote participation ahead of time. And then of course, we have to allow legal allowances. And that's that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Allow it and get prior approval. Allow it and get prior approval.
Yeah, I think allow it, the council member tells council pre, ahead of time. I think the council should vote on it and be approved and then, then they know he or she will be able to participate.
Thanks.
So Mr. City Attorney, I'll work with you, we'll draft something up in our, in our rules that basically state that we are allowed to participate remotely as long as it's pre-approved in a prior meeting and it's voted on by council and approved, then that particular council member can participate or they meet the federal requirements that you identified and we'll put that in there. And the city attorney's office will be making that recommendation to council to approve or deny.
Understood. And just for clarification, I, I certainly understand the direction of the council. Are we saying that that shall be done at the immediate regular council meeting? Because you have other types of meetings, I just want to make sure that we're very clear. Because that's what I'm, I'm getting at, that it'll be at the regular council meeting before the proposed participation via another mechanism.
Yep. For me personally, it would be a voting meeting, a prior voting meeting. That way it can be voted on and approved by this body. I think that would be the best, but that's just me. Councilmember Stanky.
I think burgers like to know later then, because certainly if you know about it well in advance.
Right.
You can get it on the record.
Right. Understood.
That person will be participating remotely two months from now on this date, that that way it's already in the schedule, so to speak.
Understood. Very clear.
All right. All right. Let's see, I believe that was our last topic of discussion. Is there any roundtable discussions either by staff or council? Okay, seeing none, time, place, future meeting, regular meeting, the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, August 30, beginning at 4:30 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no, just a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.